Okay, at 6:30. So, let's proceed with the Lewis Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 17. First item on the agenda are the minutes from May. Anyone care to make a run of them? Because there aren't many of us left who work here.
I read them and I thought they were in order and excellent.
I second that.
Yes, I agree. So, let's...I'm assuming everyone else is not going to vote. Is that right? Right, okay. All right, so let's consider the minutes passed and proceed to election of officers.
I second it.
More in favor? Aye. Okay, election of officers.
You can just ask for nominations for Secretary, and then you can do one for Chair and then one for Vice Chair.
Any proposals for the offices?
I propose Melanie Moser for Chair.
I second.
Okay, and for Vice Chair?
Can we vote on that?
Yes, vote on that.
Okay.
Can we vote now?
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay. It's unanimous. Vice Chair? Can I make a nomination? Okay, I would nominate Rich Innes as Vice Chair.
I second.
Yeah, just all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Okay, and Secretary? I can assure you, I served as Secretary once and I never did anything. So, if you can't nominate yourself-
Oh, I'll take that.
It's Kevin's kind of job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any second?
I'll second that.
So, could someone else make the motion?
I would like to nominate Kevin Keane for First Secretary of the Lewis Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, shall we vote? More in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Very, okay. We now have a new slate of officers. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move to new business. Presentation, discussion, and recommendation to the Mayor and City Council regarding draft ordinance to amend the driveway width rules on residential city alleys and alley-like roadways. Okay, there's Draft 1 and Draft 2. I'm assuming we really would consider Draft 2.
I believe Councilperson Elder would like to give a presentation to explain why this is coming before the Planning Commission. So, this was at a workshop and a Mayor and City Council meeting, and then the Mayor and City Council, because it's impacting the zoning ordinance, referred this item to the Planning Commission for your consideration, and I believe he wants to provide some information and background as to the reason it's here and what's going on.
Excellent, okay.
I think Councilperson Ritter may be assisting in that presentation.
Right, I'm gonna join him as...right, thank you.
Joe Elder, Lewis City Council. All right, well, it's a pleasure to have gotten this far on this project. Before I begin, I just want to let Commissioner Innes-
I need you to-
Let Commissioner Innes know that his certificate for completing the Lewis Alley Bike Tour is in the mail.
Right. It shall be framed.
I hope. Okay, well, at any rate, I want to just read a brief synopsis here before we get started about Lewis. Lewis is the first town in the first state. It was founded in 1631, and it developed very organically over centuries, creating what is now recognized to be the unique and charming community that contributes to what is the Lewis identity. And when I say that, the old-town Lewis roadways, and Lewis, there's an old-town Lewis. Roadways and alleys, particular shaped lots, peculiar-shaped lots, and unique buildings tell a story that makes Lewis very appealing. Developing a well-crafted ordinance which accommodates the architectural heritage, streetscape charm, livability of Lewis requires code that reflects the town's growth and development and prosperity over time. And they need to be respectful of the town's organic growth from a fishing village to a modern town that is a beach town, is not a beach town, but a town with a beach, all right? We have a very unique town here, and we need to make sure that it stays unique. And I know the Planning Commission has done a wonderful job of making sure that the developments that are going in are designed to meet all of the modern needs. But we live in an old town, and that too needs to be preserved. And one thing that we found is that we don't really recognize our alleys as separate places. So, the problems that...and let me tell you a little bit about how this got started. When I first got on council, I had some calls from some of the residents saying that some of the codes just weren't going to work for them, and it would really be impactful upon their quality of life in the homes that they now own, and that putting in some of the new codes really wouldn't work for their area. So, I went, as a new councilperson, I went to Tim Ritter, and I said, "Tim, can you help me with this?" And we went to the people that had concerns about it, and we said, "Hey, let's see if we can figure out what to do to help you." And that's how we got this far. So, this is really, I'd say, a street-level-up kind of a request. And one of the things that I'd like to ask you to do is, if you could tonight, if you could listen to us, hear this presentation, and perhaps make a decision about whether we move ahead with this, we'd really like to have your recommendations. So, the problems. Well, first of all, this is just a picture of the draft, second draft, and I want you to know this is second draft. All of this has been kind of developing as we've been going along, no secrets, and so we always put a little draft stamp at the bottom of one of these, and it may need more, who knows? So, and there's room there for your recommendations, all right? So, the problems. Treating all roadways as streets and not recognizing the utility that alleys provide, that is a difficulty for these residents. Requiring standard prescribed curb cuts appropriate for streets but inappropriate and not suitable for alley-like roadways, that's a problem. For example, when a driveway is resurfaced, property owners must comply with a 12 or up to maximum 20-foot-wide curb cut requirement, including compliance with any city right-of-way restrictions. So, I could have lived somewhere for 40 years, have a cement driveway, want to rip it out and put in a surface that will absorb water, and I will now be required to bring my driveway entrance in and enter into my property, all right? And that will show you causes some issues for many residents living in these areas. Insisting that existing driveways, at the time a property is improved or redeveloped, be brought into compliance with a code that does not reflect the adjacent roadway's function or public use. All right, so if a road is designed for neighborhood traffic, it's really not designed for the public to use all the time. It's really there for residents. It's serving the back or the side of their property. And then having them be treated as though it's a street really is a little restrictive for them. Currently, the only recourse for property owners who need relief is to go to the Board of Adjustment, which is a filing cost of $1,250, and they have no guarantee of a satisfactory solution. So, that's problematic for many people. Many examples of code noncompliant driveways on alley-like roadways have been identified. What is considered to be noncompliant is actually the rule. It's really the rule in these areas that we've looked at. These noncompliances have existed for decades, maybe even centuries, and they provide utility to both the owner, to the property owners in the community. So, if you go to these areas, you will see that they're really serving the residents there. These aren't places where the general public goes up and down all the time. So, how many did we identify? Okay, so our goal. We want to amend the ordinance to recognize qualities particular to alley-like roadways that is currently met by including them in the definition of "street," and we want to classify them separately from streets. We would like them to be alleys. Reclassify the city code to include the identified alleys without any change to signage or mailing address. We don't want to alter any of the street signs. We don't want to alter any mailing addresses. Relieve both the city and the property owners from complying with street prescribed driveway width regulations. And we'd like to amend ordinances that relieve property owners from the burden of filing and appeal with the BOA. All right, so how many parcels does this affect? Where are they? Well, let's first look at the areas that we've teased out as areas that look street, they look alley-like, and we'll show you how we determined that. So, Bay Avenue has 129 parcels. Bethel Alley has 31 parcels. We have Bradley Lane with 15, Chestnut Street with 34, Midland, you can look down the list. Now, the roadways listed, we don't want them to be considered exhaustive. What we would like to think is that if we look at the criteria for how something is determined an alley, that if there is a roadway that would fall into that category as alley, it could be added at some point. So, next slide. Where are these areas? Well, there's the canal side. On the canal side, you can see the, in the colors here, the alleys, where these alley-like streets are, all right? The next slide. And you can see on the beach side, and there's Midland, they're in blue. So, the revised definition. So, if we look at any of the following roadways, and we just went over them, if it is a one-way roadway, does not provide access to public property, and is a secondary means of access to a budding property and/or is not intended for general traffic use. So, if you go into these areas, you're going to find that you're going to be approaching the back of a house, the side of a house, sometimes you will see the front of a house. There are some alley houses that do face, as we saw, the alley, the alleyway. Has no legal parking on the roadway. If you go on Bay, there's no legal parking. No one can park on Bay Avenue. It's off-limits. Provides access to the rear of a lot, the side of a lot, and is treated as rear under the setback rules for accessory buildings and structures. And generally speaking, what you're going to find is that these areas have rolled curbs or no curbs, and they do not have sidewalks on either side of the roadway. You'll find...let's just go to the next slide here. This is just a picture for you to see. This is St. Paul Mall Alley and West Mulberry Street. This is by the old church, and it just takes a U. It goes around in a U. And this is one-way until it gets to Mulberry, and then there is a two-way, just a short two-way that goes to the back of the hospital. All right, let's look at Ship Carpenter. Let's go to the, let's move ahead, yeah, let's move ahead. Next slide, next slide, next slide. These are examples of some of the problems. Can you back up? All right, you see, there are some pictures in Ship Carpenter of the shallow, very shallow driveways. You see, on the right, three cars in a row parked there. Well, if they had a 12-foot-wide entrance into that, how would they ever move from side to side? They wouldn't be able to get their three cars in. And their parking is so shallow, and it's been that way for decades, that they can't get their cars in if we do that. And I want to point out something else. Do you see where that fire hydrant is? Yeah, in the middle picture? That shows where the easement would be. That means, that's almost six feet, so that they would have to cross with that 12-foot-wide entrance to their property. They'd lose another, if you look at these three cars, they'd lose six feet. What would they do? They'd have, be able to maybe get one car on their property. So, let's move to the next slide. That's an example of the notches. Now, this is a house on St. Paul Alley, and you can see they have two cars in there. They'd originally planned this to have a two-car garage, but when they went to the nave and put these permeable blocks in, they had to notch out on either side of their driveway. It really looks terrible. And all of the other properties in the neighborhood are, they have big wide driveways. It's not an area that's heavily traveled or needs public parking. Let's look at the next one, Mall Alley. Here's an example of, well, this is a situation where people have to park parallel along the side of their house because they really don't have enough parking there. West Mulberry, same thing. This just changed. Now, this was a renovation, and you'll notice the cars pulled in on the side. This is the owner's car. There's no way they can get into a driveway if they pull straight in. Tim?
Thank you. This is a great example of actually a BOA decision that was made fairly recently. The building that you see there with the three windows was a three-bay garage originally and was that way for many, many years. Recently, the homeowners wanted to convert that to living space, and of course, that was not allowed, but they went through BOA, and the BOA granted them permission to enclose it, make it living space, removing the off-street parking. So, now you end up with what you see here, where the right-of-way is encumbered by, by the homeowner's cars being parked in the area where they're being parked. The apron, you can see the original apron to the garage is between that blue car and the building itself. So, that's just an example of someone who went through the process and got what they wanted with respect to a conversion from garage to living space, but the effect and the results are impactful to the public right-of-way.
In fact, these cars have to park partially in the public right-of-way. Next slide, okay, here's just another example on West Mulberry. We'll move ahead. Yeah, we'll just click through these slides. So, let's, we'll move ahead, all right? These are just a few pictures to look at. So, basically, our action plan. We wanted, we've taken this to council, and we, in council, we referred it to the Planning Commission.
That's why we're here today.
And our next step would be, if you greenlight it for us, we would take it back to council. We would have a public hearing, and then we would go back to Mayor and City Council and make a final vote whether we would grant these people some relief. Next slide, is there any more? No, that's it. So, I wanted to bring to your attention that if you go to the city website, you'll be able to take the bike tour, all right? Blue will show you that. If you go here, you can look up the bike tour and kind of see for yourself what it looks like. And yes, these are very unusual areas, but try bringing them into compliance with-
Could I make a request? Since we, since you're hoping for us to make some sort of decision tonight, can we all just watch this? It's only three minutes. Would that be okay with anyone else?
Well, I think it's more than three minutes. There are many of these, blue?
Oh, I see.
There are a series.
There's a series of different-
Well, let's watch at least one.
Yeah, I would think so too, because-
We go on the website.
I'm not sure how familiar or how comfortable with the topic everyone is here, you know, just gauging the group, because these are kind of obscure little weird streets. Well, not weird, but obscure little streets that, you know, you may or may not have-
Charming.
They're very charming, but unless you have friends on those streets, you may not have been down those streets, or unless you're just, or somebody who's nosy and drives around a lot.
If you, okay, is it your, the commission's pleasure to watch the video? If you start, if this is the one that you want to start, want to watch, it's the Ship Carpenter one that's teed up? What I would like to just make you all aware of is that the homes that are along Ship Carpenter Square, that's the name of the street or the roadway, those home, that's the back of those homes. None of those homes that are in Ship Carpenter Square subdivision actually face, their front doors are not on that, on Ship Carpenter Square. So, when you'll see, not only are there driveways that are there, the fire hydrants, the fences, you'll see fences which would never be allowed in a front yard, but they are there because this is their backyards. The street lights, the transformers, telephone pedestals, et cetera, all that is in this, what we think is an alley-like roadway. So, you'll see that as you go through this video.
Now, imagine if they had to reduce.
This is 4H, right? And is there any gesture?
It's R4.
Or R4.
H.
Not H, R4H.
R4H.
That's what I meant, what did I say? Yeah.
H4.
H4, yeah, sorry. See what we did? Fire hydrant.
See how far back the easements are?
And the light pole, how far back that is?
And many people have not put in any hard surface, any permeable brick.
Well, there are many examples where they have.
But now, the ones that haven't are going to have a difficult time if they do want to do that.
Right, if they really make any changes.
And I'd also like to comment that if you took this right in on your bike, I'm rather impressed. It's pretty steady.
One hand, one hand.
Yeah, unless you wanted a GoPro, I was pretty, that's one-handed bike riding and the other one on a cellphone?
I had to do it two times to get it to-
I could still be doing it, it wouldn't be this steady.
This is really steady now. I've got smooth pedaling.
Deborah, wait until the crash comes.
To the evil part, right? And that's a great example of one of the other loopholes that we have in our driveway ordinances. I'll speak to that later if you like.
I am wondering too if this particular, since there's no narration, you know, Ship Carpenter Square has their own codes, their own HOA codes, and I'm wondering if, you know, concrete or, you know, other surfaces are prohibited from the materials code in Ship Carpenter Square, because these driveways are very nice and not what you always see throughout town.
There's an example of a concrete one. They don't all look permeable to me.
No.
No, they could be, they're nice.
If they would take them out and redo them, they definitely would need to use permeable now. That's our new code. If you want to look at an example of another one, which would you say would be more crude?
Well, let them choose. If there was any question, those are the samples of videos.
Let's see Bay Avenue. If you don't mind, I mean, only because it's the biggest, so it's one with the largest number of persons.
And speaking of Bay Avenue, Bay Avenue was originally Bay Alley, and that's how it was created in their city documents. It was always, that's why it's as narrow as it is. It was a service road. These houses that are on the water side, they, to this day, their fronts are on the water. These are all, their back, their back doors are what you see from Bay.
And also, when, what year was that paved or roughly? It's, was it the last time it was unpaved?
The 2011.
Yeah, it hasn't been that long, right?
2011.
Yeah. Well, like, to me, it was just paved, but-
Yeah, well, that's because you're in a Lewis, yeah. And it's permeable surface.
So, the speed limit on this road-
It was really an alley before, before it was paved.
Yeah, it really is, but it's the same narrow width, Deborah. It hasn't been improved. And it's one-way. It's southbound, huh?
One-way, and it's 10 miles an hour, 10 mile an hour speed limit, and traffic is allowed to go the other way if it's bike traffic. So, pedestrian bicycle traffic can go either way on that alley.
One other question. These other streets, are they lower-speed-limit streets too? Because particularly when I think about like Mall Alley and back in there and that little tiny area-
I don't even think they have a speed limit posted on those. I didn't see one.
It should be very slow.
The fastest one you're gonna have is 25 miles an hour, and that's most likely gonna be Chestnut, Mulberry, and Ship Carpenter Square, because those are your normal streets.
Joe, may I ask a question?
Sure.
How many complaints did you have that led you to do this?
I've had, I've had one complaint. I had one complaint on Chestnut, and it was not related to the driveway width, what it was related to in- not related to, um, the driveway width, what it was related to, and Rich was there with me, it was more that the neighbor is kind of encroaching, taking up the whole, uh, area and actually pulling in over a curb, gravelled an area and drives over the curb to get into it, and, uh, has a two-car driveway right next to that area, but won't park in it, and forces them, they have no parking, to try and squeeze in front of their house. So she was more upset with that, I think.
Yes. Actually, if you, if you could pull up Chestnut, because I, I think there is a legitimate question about whether Chestnut is an alley, because there are several homes that, who front onto Chestnut. So I ju, I just think that that is worth taking, and it's a short street anyway, so it's worth looking at.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's actually, for anybody watching on television, I would characterize that as the less crowded section of Bay. I think it gets higher density when you get on the other side of the beach house.
That took a little skill to get that...
On the south side.
Yes.
To turn around, okay.
So you're westbound here on Chestnut, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, going towards the hospital.
So the, there are houses that are fronting onto...
And there's one with a rear.
You've got backyard, backyard gates and so forth, driveways.
It's a mix.
It's a mix.
It's a, it's a big mix.
There's a front.
There's the driveway I talked about, if you back up, um, that was the woman that made... Yeah, the person here, if you can stop right here.
Right.
You see what they did, they brought in brownstone. Now their house is on the other street.
They have a car park right there.
Yeah, and, and they won't move this truck, it's been there for months, and, and she lives in, in the duplex, and so they drive right over the curb to get into that brownstone driveway, and they park nothing in their driveway. And so that was the problem, is more a neighbor that is not being very neighborly.
And they can park in front of their house too, so they have like, fine parking places.
Yeah, they, they actually have, our house fronts on the other street.
Yeah, that served off the topic.
Yeah.
And then, and now down at the, if I'm not mistaken, down at the beginning where there are two, um, and I guess my definition of new may be questionable, but, uh, two new townhouses that were developed in the last decade or so, they have very wide, they may have very wide driveways too, they're at the beginning of...
Right, they were the very beginning.
Yes, they're right at the beginning down by, um, what is now Old Wood.
In that area, yeah.
Yes, they're the first property on the right.
On the right.
But they have a very wide, they have an atypically wide driveway, too.
I did a U-turn. I didn't fall.
He's showing off his bikes and scaling them, camera scale. Right, and there's a picture of a through lot, you know, the house is here, and he touches Bethel out.
So it seems that the real fundamental issue here is the parking in a driveway width when it comes to these alleys, right? I mean, that, is that really the, what other change, if we were to redefine these folks, these streets as alleys, what other changes would be impact, I mean, what other impactful changes would there be, except for you wouldn't have that restriction of a twelve-foot width if you, if you wanted to redo your driveway, for instance?
I, I think that, I, I believe that would be probably one of the, the major ones, that would be the major one.
These... Is there any like BBW, BBW, or, or utility restrictions on these streets now that wouldn't be there if you moved them to alleys, or anything like that?
I don't believe so.
No?
No, yeah. The one alley that is very rudimentary is, um, uh, let's see. Here, here, uh, what, what is this one? Yeah, the, look at this alley.
Okay, this is the alley from Third Street, you're now, he's headed westward, going towards the hospital, so, and the, um... Thank you. So he's headed westward on this alley, and, uh, he's entered the alley from Third Street, very close to the, the Cape Artists building, that alley there.
Now you'll notice it's very wide.
And look at the mixture of, yeah, and, yeah.
This is clearly an alley.
Yes, right.
And I also think that the, um, the one back in the corner with all the different streets, Mall, is that Mall Alley? I think that's another one, has everyone been back there and knows that?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we could safely say that's a, that's an alley. There's people hanging out into the roadway when you go back there and...
You just leave it to them.
Yeah.
There's one of the houses that faces an alley, it was just, and there's a through lot, they have a driveway on Market, right, and it comes through to, um, to the alley.
Question here, is there, would there be any unforeseen consequences with respect to the city's obligation if a street currently were to become an alley? For example, with respect to maintenance, or access for waste management, access for garbage and recycling, pick up any of those things? So there's no sort of defining thing anywhere that says, we shall pick up trash off of streets, for example?
Yeah. There's no expectation that any city service would be compromised by this suggestion if this was to be enacted. This is strictly a, um, a classification exercise where, uh, by relieving, by classifying these street, what are currently streets as alleys, it would liberate, uh, the, the application of driveway widths and the materials that are used.
Right, no, I understand that, I understand that.
But it does not affect any of the services.
That, you're defining that as... You're saying that that's the consequence. I asked if there were unintended consequences along the lines of, there's kinds of services that folks who live who currently get those on what is a street currently, if it were to become an alley, would there be any issue with any of those services that...
That would not be effective.
I don't believe it, and the one thing that, um, that the difference between an alley and a street, uh, the, the streets, uh, that the city is very interested in seem to be streets where there can be parking for the public. So if you look at the rest of the streets in town, and we, we went around and looked, and you, you can look for yourself, uh, this, the city, um, is able to use that for visitor parking, that kind of thing, but these are areas where people generally don't travel. They're usually residents. So occasionally, a visitor, I, I would say on, um, Cedar, you're going to get visitors because they kind of go down the alley, but they can't park, they don't stay, um, they're, they're pass-through.
One of the concerns I have is some of these pavements seem to be very, very broad, as they are, they're, like on, on Bay Avenue, um, there is no visitor parking, so to speak, so people are paving an awful lot. Um, Janelle, are, are these checked for coverage numbers?
For, for, so for all new houses or any type of development, if you're gonna put a shed or something on, we check lot coverage for any, um, any new development that goes on, on a property, if that was your question?
Well, if someone widens their, their, their parking area in the rear of their house on an alley, does that get checked?
Yes, because you're supposed to get a building permit to expand your driveway, and you might need a street brake permit if you're touching the city's street to make sure if there's any damage to the city's street, there's, there's a, we know that you've touched the city's street. So you typically get a street brake permit and a, and a building permit for a driveway if you're building something new or adding to.
As long as it's checked on...
Yes, it is.
I, I think I would, I would also dare say that you're supposed to get a building permit, but some of these, since they're not on thoroughfares that, um, people drive by all the time, that sometimes things happen, and, um, you know, I know that's beyond your, your ability to, uh, monitor, uh, and many of these were done before you were on board with the city.
Well, and most of these occurred prior to a change in the city's zoning code. So twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the code was amended because there was concern, um, by planning commission and council, because they amended the code, um, regarding widths of curb cuts. So about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the code was changed to put in twelve-foot wide curb cuts, and again, we're only talking about where the driveway hits the property line, the right-of-way line. If, once you get on your property, nobody cares how wide it goes, um, and twenty feet, so it's twelve or twenty feet, um, throughout the city, and that's when it, when it was changed. So now staff is making sure whenever there's a new driveway permit or, or goes in, that we're making sure it's in compliance with that.
I, I had two questions. The first question is, unless I'm missing something, as I read the ordinance, it pretty much opens up these streets to be able to have exceptions to the width of the, um, the driveway, of the curb cut. Is it possible, I would just suggest or ask, that, um, could these, this ordinance apply only to existing, you know, grandfathered, um, driveways that are already there? My concern is particularly on Bay where there's, you know, a lack of parking and, uh, huge, um, huge homes coming in, that this could easily become an opportunity to go one driveway paved to the next driveway paved, and I worry about that. So it would be more comfortable personally, um, if I knew somehow this just applied to existing homes on the alleys, not to new construction on the alleys.
Well, I think, um, your point is well-taken. Uh, there are some areas in the city where on streets, there are driveways that are forty feet wide, and we need to reclaim that, those areas. There's one, uh, that I look at that, uh, if that ever were brought down to a reasonable size, we would gain more parking on the streets for people that are visiting the center of town. But how do you take that away? The only time to take that away is when there's, uh, new surface put in. So on the streets, it makes a lot of sense. Most, we've, as we rode around, most of the, uh, streets have twelve-foot wide driveways, many of them, most of them, the majority are in, in compliance. Um, every once in a while, they'll try and sneak a wide one in, but they get caught.
I'm just wondering for this with the alleys, could we somehow write this in that... I, I, Janelle, do you have any suggestions that, um...
So I think what you want to figure out is if you want to go all the known alleys throughout the city, because that would take care of all the known alleys, because I think you've got a, a good list, um, but this could be more comprehensive, so we don't forget any alleys, unless you're not comfortable with that. So I'm just spitballing ideas.
Sure.
Um, you could say that there is no minimum curb cut, or you could put, you know, a, a maximum curb cut of like not more than, because again, we're talking about the alleys, maybe not more than thirty feet or something, you guys can pick a number, um, because then that doesn't impact on-street parking for the alleys, because you, you can't have on-street parking.
We're talking about two different things.
Okay.
Um, what I'm trying to get at is that the situations that are there now, many of them just were created because that was the way things were done then, and that we don't want to put a hardship on those homeowners. And that's why I think it's great that you identified a problem and that you crafted a solution. That makes sense. But I am worried that this could turn into, um, an opportunity to just have a paved front yard, um, when you're talking about new construction. So that's why I'm saying, could this be something that would only apply to an existing driveway and not to new construction? Because in a new construction situation, there is always an option, and that option is to make your home smaller and to make your driveway larger, whereas in these older homes, the way that they're seated and they often just have a small amount in front, they do have to do the, the pull-in option on the alleys. Um, so that's where I'm trying to get at. How could we write this code that it wouldn't just be a carte blanche for anyone to go in and, hey, I'm on one of these named alley streets, woo-hoo, I can pave the whole front yard and have no requirements about my curb cut?
May I make a correction, offer a correction? The, uh, examples that we have found, the, the, at the streets that would be considered classified as alleys, uh, for most of them, it is their backyards, okay? So it's not front yard that's being impacted by this.
I'm sorry, I said that wrong, yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear, the impact is in the backyard.
Yes, yes.
And that is...
My, my, my just wording mistake, I do understand.
Okay, just want to make sure it's clear.
But, but still, the question remains the same.
We can come up, we can come up with something.
Go ahead.
We can certainly do that, um, apply it to existing driveways that are non-conforming, um, non-conforming structures can, uh, be repaired, so we could clarify in the code that, uh, routine maintenance includes repaving the driveway.
I guess my question is, so what, what, the, the cutouts, what are the benefits than draw, what are the cutouts in the code for? The cutouts are basically there so that, for street parking, right? So that allows street parking away from the driveways, right?
Yeah, typically, if you have a, a certain, like, especially in the downtown, the R four, the R four H is typically where you're gonna find the twelve-foot wide curb cuts. One, they're typically smaller lots, and two, that allows for more on-street parking.
So in this case, though, the alleys don't have street parking, right? So the benefit of the curb cut as being to... What's that?
Didn't we see many cars parked in streets?
Well...
Some do hold off to the side. Is it major city parking to corral cars? No, it's more for the residents. Uh, those areas, yeah.
The, the, those areas, um, are generally for, for residents. Uh, they're not really pass-through kinds of streets where you would travel around car, uh, town or expect to park your car if you were a visitor.
Yeah, your typical alleys, um, are twelve to sixteen foot wide, they're normal, they're usually one-way, um, because again, they're just to be like service off the back, uh, it's just a service road, it's not meant to have, they're not intended to have on-street parking on one side or both sides, um, so that's something to, to, just for your information.
Excuse me, Janelle, the new construction would still have to, uh, comply with, uh, the ground coverage, permeability, all of those kinds of things, whether they had a twenty-foot, a ten-foot, a twelve-foot, or a forty-foot.
Correct.
Curb, right?
Correct.
So basically, you're talking about, you could have a massive driveway, whether you have an opening that this wide to it or that wide to it, is what you're talking about in the alley.
Correct, and again, it's just about the opening that we're talking about, because once you get, and we've had this happen a lot, once you get past, we always tell, give it an inch or two, once you get past, you can make it as wide as you want, as long as you're in compliance with lot coverage.
So the, the restriction, that twelve-foot restriction is supposed to be applicable to the entire depth, if you will, of the, of the city right-of-way. And once you get onto private property, then you can widen it up, make it as long as you want and as wide as you want. We have no, and that could be something else that you all might want to look at, but, uh, that's not what we troubled ourselves with during this study. Uh, but there is a, there, it was interesting when I started on this project, working with Joe, uh, to see the common ground between different neighborhoods where I never thought I would see common ground, and, uh, the, the shining example of that is in fact, when you look at, uh, Bay Avenue and how that has been developed over many years, and also see, for example, um, Ship Carpenter Square, and they are actually very, very similar. Ship Carpenter Square is a much wider street, I understand that, and it has curb, it has that kind of infrastructure, but the critical thing is, is that it's the backs of all those homes, and that is a common element found along the entire length of Bay and also, um, in Ship Carpenter Square. And you see it in other, on other streets that we are suggesting that they be considered as alleys.
And I, I thi, I think if you look at, uh, zoning as, uh, something that should be flexible in terms of being able to be renewed, changed, it's, it's something that should have life, you know, and when needs arise... And when needs arise where you need to modify it, that's good for citizens. You're not just working here with uh one or two people. You're really looking at this affects approximately what we have here, uh three hundred, over three hundred.
Okay, we're final, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We also need to look ahead. Uh, I know in the Anx Res District, uh, we're encouraging townhouses that would have parking in the rear. And I would want to make sure that, um, that these, whatever we, gets um adopted now, would, would also apply to them. So one of the things that I'm concerned about is, is there a standard right-of-way width for an alley? And is there a standard pavement width for an alley?
So, new alleys typically, the fire department wants at least sixteen feet, and depending on their equipment, they want eighteen feet. They want it as wide as possible.
Of pavement.
Typical, of pavement. Right-of-way is, right-of-way can be twelve feet to maybe, yeah. We've got alleys that are ten feet wide in the city, um, and that is the right-of-way. Um, so again, some of these alleys are really old, they can, you don't, you're not going to see forty, you don't typically see forty and fifty foot wide right-of-ways for an alley, cause an alley is normally narrower. So I think Bay Avenue has a twelve foot wide right-of-way, maybe a little bit more, depending on where it is. Some of the alleys are going to be ten feet wide, um, and that's with the right-of-way. Um, maybe the max will be about twenty, we'd have to do a, a look, but you don't typically see a right-of-way much wider than that.
But Melanie, what you were asking was for a new subdivision.
Correct.
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 And.
To have some standards since we're dealing with alleys now.
Correct, and I, I'm not aware, I can't think of a place in code where uh the planning commission has created that, that requirement or that standard, that would be something that you all would, uh, should consider doing.
Well, the subdivision code talks about right-of-way and pavement width.
Yeah, I'm trying to get there.
Right, and, and, yeah. And the pa- what's paved is going to have to be the same as the right-of-way. You know, it's, you're gonna have, the, you're not gonna have a narrower right-of-way than what is paved.
Right, right.
Right, that, yeah, cause it's public access. You know, it has to serve adjoining properties.
Right, right, right.
I think the issue of right-of-way is, is important due to some of these streets. Um, yes, the width of the driveway only applies on the right-of-way area, but if your property is treated as your backyard and you have a fence um eight feet from the edge of the road, uh, and your right-of-way is six feet, how are you going to expand that to, to make enough space to park the cars?
Yeah, and, and that is the case uh which we showed you in Ship Carpenter. They just, they just don't have the space. All these alleys are a little different, and it was very difficult to come up with uh criteria. So um, the criteria that we used pointed out the streets that we, well, the, the alley-like uh streets that we presented this evening.
Any more questions?
There are some people here from some of the areas affected, I don't know if, if you're able to talk to them or ask them any questions.
Well, we could certainly have public comment now, if, if any of those people would like to speak. Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Dennis Reardon, thirteen of Two Bay Avenue. Uh, first let me say, I totally support what these guys have done, because they have identified s- what's now called streets that used to be alleys. And it, you know, this one size doesn't fit all. We have, as Joe said, uh organic building of this town, and not anything in the old area is standard. Uh, so I totally support this, because it's going to really help a lot. I'd like to clarify a couple things, uh, and, and inform you, like, Bay Avenue, where I live, uh, there's what, a hundred and twenty-nine homes on the Bayside. And the back, there was a street on the Bayside of Bay Avenue that went from Savannah up to about New York Avenue, which is maybe three-quarters of a mile down from Savannah. And then they abandoned that. The sidewalk is still there. And there is, there is no, if there's a right-of-way on the Bayside of Bay Avenue, it's about six inches. There is no right-of-way. I know that years ago, there was an idea to make it clear on both sides, two feet. City doesn't own two feet on every street there, but particularly on the Bayside, there is that much right-of-way at most. So be very careful if you're going to try to protect some things that you don't inadvertently turn on some unintended consequence on current homeowners. I know that in the alleys you asked about, do they access trash and those kinds of things? On the, there are multiple alleys between Bay Avenue and Cedar Street. And the trash trucks go up and down, many of them. Others are not, they don't go all the way through, but people use them to ba- access the back of their homes, which provides additional parking on the connector streets. So it's, it's a uh, something you got to be really mindful of the whole way that you're going to apply this. But I think these guys hit the nail on the head. And the other thing, just to take it a step further, the current code doesn't really accommodate Ship Carpenter Square, Bay Avenue, and a number of other streets that used to be alleys. But that's not uncommon in our code, a lot of our, things in our code are very old. They don't apply now, that you can't try putting one-size-fits-all on there. And we had two parking committees that, very good example of that. So um, I, I support this, I'd like to see it get passed to help these people that have these parking situations that are unique and from, based on the old-time stuff. Thanks very much.
Yes. State your name and address, please.
Julia Carey, thirty Ship Carpenter Square. Um, on behalf of our HOA, um, we definitely support this and are very grateful to these two gentlemen for spearheading it. So for my property in particular, I've, I live at number thirty. And if I were to have to apply the current width restriction, I'd have to take out my family room, because the depth of my parking space is one car deep. If I were pushed, that would allow me to put one and a half cars on my parking space. And the other, any other cars or visitors, I don't have any frontage in front of my property. So I would have my, um, there's my neighbors' mailboxes on one side, there's a power box on the other side. Things that you don't want to block. Not all of the homes on Ship Carpenter have the same constraints. You saw in the video, some of them do have a traditional driveway and even garages. But at least fifty percent of us do have constraints. I mean, it's a beautiful little community and it's a unique street, and the way it was put together, a lot of us have very shallow driveways, and so we need this depth, we need the, the width relief, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bruce Bolander, I live at twenty-three Ship Carpenter Square. And uh, I'd like to echo what Julia said about our appreciation for what Councilman Elder and Richard have done. I just want to uh add something to what Julia said. Actually, she, she understated the percentage of the homes on Ship Carpenter Square that are not in compliance. It's, I think, all but one of the thirty-seven has, have, have driveways that exceed the, the twelve feet uh coming off the street. And, you know, I would submit that it is zoning code that, that, that rent, that renders virtually every property in a neighborhood like Ship Carpenter Square non-compliant is perhaps not, not the best, not the best application of the code. So, and all of, all of us who want to either uh do, do any, any repairs, improvements, or even modest relocations to our, our driveways are basically, we're stuck with, we're stuck with what we, we have. And it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense in Ship Carpenter Square, it doesn't make sense in, on Bay Avenue or any of the smaller streets that, that Joe and Tim have talked about. So anyway, we appreciate, we appreciate uh your attention to this and, and it's been, it's been almost two years now, I think, since, since we've been working on this, and we hope, hope to see it, see it uh resolved, resolved soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Okay, thank you.
I would be, unless we want more discussion among ourselves here, I would be comfortable with making a motion. If, with Alex's assistance, if that's possible.
Okay.
Okay, um, I would like to um make a motion to approve the draft.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval of the draft.
While she's looking through that, I just want to clarify, you're only looking for uh the amendment to twenty feet, not just unlimited.
No, they want to leave, if somebody has a forty-foot wide curb cut, they want to leave it. So what you could do is create a new section of, called curb cuts, and that says all alleys, and then list some of those, like Ship Carpenter Square, Bay Avenue, and then say existing homes um that they, that have curb cuts that are larger than, the code section may remain, but may not get any larger than, and, than any new homes on those alleys and those certain streets, would then have to comply with the twelve or twenty-feet wide curb cut.
Okay.
Do we really want to put the twelve and twenty foot on a new home, so? I mean, I'm not sure if that's, or, I mean, I.
Because every other new home throughout the city, it has to comply with twelve or twenty, so that's something you guys have to determine.
But the twelve and twenty are for parking, I mean, the curb cuts are really for streets with parking, right? Am I, am I wrong here?
They're for streets, they're not for alleys. They're not for alleys, that's the correct thing that you have to understand.
If you had a rebuilt home on an alley street.
I'm sorry.
If you had a rebuilt home on an alley street, the limitation would apply of what to that? Cause you, you, you take away the existing conditions, the grandfathered positions, so what would be the new home?
Yeah.
The new home on an alley street would be subject to what?
Twelve or twenty feet.
Well, I think our code, actually, I think there's language in the code that says that homes will not face alleys. Now, we haven't practiced that, but there is code, language in the code.
Right.
To that effect. And we have allowed houses to be built facing the alley within the last mm, six years or so, that I'm aware of. So um, we aren't consistent.
But if you don't worry about, if you're just taking access off your alley, we don't care which way the house is faced, it's just where your driveway is. So we're only looking at, doesn't, for, from a, from a, from a zoning perspective, from the planning and zoning department and the building department, we're only looking at wherever your driveway is, it's either going to be twelve or twenty for a new construction. Cause, and especially in an alley, you usually put, in, in the alley, your, your front is on the, facing whatever your street address is. And the alley, you might be putting in a garage, or you're just taking access off the alley, so it's still twelve or twenty if you're going to go that, if you're going to build a brand-new house.
I, I thought the whole, whole point here was to lift the restrictions on alleys. So there are no twelve or twenties in alleys, there's no, there's no twelve points on new construction.
Yeah, well, uh, again, what I've heard was.
That is what I heard, and that is what I heard, and then I brought up the concern of kind of the giving carte blanche to future new construction was a little concerning. And suggested that we look at excluding um new construction from this. So that is, yeah, I'm the one who changed the intent there.
But, but we still have the limitation of, of how much impervious they can have.
Yes.
Correct.
So it shouldn't really matter what they do in the alley. I think we should leave it open.
And can, can I just offer a, just a thought or more of a question there? Is, if our intent is to um, in, in limiting the, the curb cut on, on alleys and everywhere, i- in order to preserve parking, and if we decide that alleys are not providing city parking, you know, as, as Congressman Elder pointed out earlier, that these are really, um, you know, that is, that is in the vast majority, may, maybe there's an exception here or there, but those are for the people that live there, you know, I mean. But that isn't, you know, people aren't going and parking in an alley and then walking into town. So if that is the intention, then um, then I don't know why we would have a, enforce a twelve or twenty-foot um curb uh restriction within an, within an alley if the intent of that is really to, it, to uh generate more parking um in the, in, in our city. And am I missing something here, maybe I am.
I think you are missing, in the example, for example, the example of Bay Avenue, yeah, you're missing the fact that the um, the, it's one-way street, there's no parking, it's signed now, there's no parking allowed on Bay Avenue.
Right.
It's a, I would disagree with how uh my, my associate, uh Joe, uh described Bay as not a public street, I consider it very much a public thoroughfare. Uh, but it is very alley-like, and it, it really still holds true to the original design of that roadway. And that was as an alley. So it's narrow, there's no curb, there's no improvements at all, no stormwater management at all. And the, those are the backs of the homes, and the driveways serve the garages that have been constructed, as well as providing off-street parking for those residents, for those property owners.
So, just on, you know. On the point at hand though, uh, Councilman Richard, would you advise that we um, take the suggestion of, of um, to, to, to maintain um the curb cut restrictions for new construction?
I, I.
Even in alleys?
No, I'm actually suggesting that we abandon that kind of restriction.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I think that we, that's what I described earlier, is liberating that uh, the alleys from those kinds of.
I just have one final comment on this, is that I took the intent a little differently. I took the intent here as um an attempt to relieve, um, relieve a hardship that existing homeowners have. So for me, the reason that I am concerned about applying it to new development is that they're walking into a situation where they have an open design plan. Um, and they're not really, they don't have a hardship. Existing homes have a hardship.
But we would create a hardship for them. For example, if I would build a new home on Bay, uh, there is no parking on the street. And now I have a little narrow entrance coming in, and I'm building a very large house. All the other streets on the house, on, all the other houses on the street have these wide areas where they can park all their guests and all the people that are there. Uh, it causes a problem. Additionally, going to one of the alleys, and if someone builds new on the alley, and then taking away their ability to park on, on their property, what that does is, it forces them, these people that are parking in these alleys, in these back areas, are not parking on the streets, and they're allowing uh visitors to tap. You look at the area around Chestnut, those areas, if they've got parking behind their house, they generally aren't parking in the front, on the street where we have visitors, generally speaking.
So what I'm hearing is you, technically, all you need to. So what I'm hearing is you, technically, all you need to really amend is 197, 61, C5, and create an A that says all alleys, Bay Avenue, Ship Carpenter Square, Mall, West Mulberry Street, and Chestnut Street, that there is no curb cut limit.
Madam Chair, can I just make a streamlined, because what I've just been hearing? If all of these, just go after the commissionary votes, if all of these properties, all of these streets or alleys have been identified, and if we grandfog those, what we're really saying is, we are classifying by code, all of you, all the lists that council members have provided, as alleys, even if it says street, you're classified as an alley. If you're classified as an alley, then it lifts all these other things. So I feel like there's a streamlined way to get there, without a long deliberation, just make them alleys. A lot of code is very clear to say, and that these things are alleys, then you're there.
Right, because again, those driveway widths apply to streets, not to alleys. That's, you know, the funny thing about the English language.
You know, I would make that motion, as Amy described exactly, that we simply classify these streets as, these streets now defined as alleys, and that we lift those restrictions as defined in this, in the bill as laid out here.
Can I raise one question?
Since I actually have started to make a motion, I think I have to rescind it. So I rescind that.
Nobody seconded it, so you're fine.
Okay.
Can I just raise a question? Having, the only person here who may get a certificate for completing the, I really do think that Chestnut Street is not, doesn't meet the definition that others, that other streets that are listed, alleys that are listed here, meet. There are too many homes there that are front on Chestnut Street, and it feels to me like a street. It feels to me like a street. So what I would suggest is that we remove that from the list for now, and if there are residents there that feel strongly that that should be included, I think that we could go back and amend that at a later time, if that is acceptable. The other thing that I would just like to say while I have the floor, is that one of the huge problems that we have here in this coastal community is coastal flooding and sea level rise, which are real and existential. And the more that we can create an incentive to incentivize homeowners to create pervious surfaces that are going to help us deal with that, and we've dealt with that in the Planning Commission, the better. And this would, in my view, could create that kind of an incentive, because now homeowners, and I'd like to, you know, to thank the people who spoke up today, but if this removes a barrier to say, okay, we can go out and change our driveway, we want to improve it, and then we already have it in code now that it has to be pervious surfaces, that, to me, is a good outcome here. Anyway, with that, I'll yield the floor.
So I have, I have an idea. So you don't actually have to touch the definition of alley, what you can do is create a little section in 197, call it, under where it says number C5, where it's design standards, and talks about the curb cuts, you can create like a little A, and then say all alleys, Bay Avenue, Ship Carpenter, West Mulberry, and if I'm forgetting one of the other streets except Chestnut, because that's what I've heard, that there's no curb cut limit, and then to add that section of all alleys, Bay Avenue, Ship Carpenter, et cetera, to 167, so that then that doesn't apply, and it's a much cleaner, and still gets rid of your curb cut width across the board, without having to change a definition of an alley, which could impact setbacks. Does that, do you understand what I'm doing? Okay, so I'm getting what you want, and I think a little bit more of a streamlined item, because we're just saying, okay, if you're all alleys throughout the city, so we've covered all of them, Ship Carpenter, Bay Avenue, and the others except for Chestnut, that there would be no curb cut limit, and we'd add that to 197 and 167, because that's where your curb cut limits are.
167, 16 design standards.
Yep.
And the definition of an alley.
You don't have to touch.
Yeah.
Because you're creating a curb cut area, and the design standards, so you don't actually have to touch the definition of that. There are actually multiple definitions of the alley already in the code, but what I'm proposing is, you don't actually have to touch the definition of the alley, because all you're talking about is the curb cut.
I understand that, but if I want to make the case for my street in the city to be an alley, where do I go to find exactly what defines an alley?
So that was provided in your packet.
That's in the packet.
That is in your packet.
That's what I'm asking, does that stand?
Yeah, that stays.
In part of this recommendation?
The criteria.
Yes.
We felt that that was really important, it helped to take these street, these alley-like streets, and find some commonality between them, and-
Because I would expect we're going to have some folks come and say, isn't my street an alley, I'd like to be an alley, you know, and make their case, so we want to have some clear language about what they-
Yeah, there's clear language in the code, in the subdivision code, and in the zoning code.
And that's sufficient or consistent with what you propose?
And vice versa. We might also, in the future, think ahead, if we, as we develop, we might have an alley where we're going to want to run more traffic through, and things are going to change, and we might say, well, we want to turn this from an alley into a street, we're going to put curbs in, and, you know, the city's changing constantly. So that might happen someday. We've got some alleys right now that just aren't really utilized now, but in the future they could be. Yeah. Can, can, can folks that are here tonight maybe comment on the suggestions, because it's different than what came forward?
There's a motion on the floor, excuse me for taking over there, but there is a motion.
So the motion is to adopt the, let me see, the proposal is-
Version B.
Version B of the alley, are we calling it an ordinance, or are we calling it, what are we calling it, Alex?
So, to be helpful, I think that, as Councilperson Richard mentioned earlier, there will be, there will need to be a public hearing to adopt this, so council will still need to explore this issue further, in order to amend the zoning code, there has to be a public hearing. So the exact vehicle at this point doesn't need to be settled, you could recommend that council adopts this general idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I recommend that council adopt this general idea regarding alleys, and with the exception, though, to Bill's point regarding Chestnut Street, correct?
Great.
Removing Chestnut Street from the list of alleys as defined. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, shall we vote, or is there discussion, further discussion? No? Okay, let's vote.
Aye.
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 And aye, so it's unanimous.
And I want to thank both councilmen for their great work on this. Really, thank you.
I, I'm, well, thank you, and I'm hopeful that, that our council and our commissions continue to listen to the citizenry, and to modify code as necessary to make our city continue to be a livable, wonderful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible recommendation to Mayor and City Council regarding a request from Overfalls Foundation to construct a separate structure in Canalfront Park near the Monomoy Surf Boat and Playground, served as an extension of the Overfalls Museum.
So this is a recommendation from the Mayor and City Council, it's more to look at the use, and see if the use is an appropriate use in the open space zone. The property is zoned OAS, so the open space zone, a museum is a permitted use, a storage shed is not a permitted use. So the Mayor and Council said, maybe this needs to be further vetted by the Planning Commission to determine if it's appropriate or not within the open space zone. And I believe there's a representative from the Overfalls to provide some information.
My name's Pat Lynch, and I'm with you at Overfalls, I'm on the Dirty Hands Gang. On October 5th of 2000, the Overfalls Foundation was established as a 501(c) nonprofit. The mission of the Overfalls Foundation is to preserve, teach, and honor the United States' light ships and their sailors and maritime history of our community through the preservation and display of the light ship Overfalls LV118 and its collection of associated marine artifacts. The Overfalls Foundation operates a museum complex in the Canalfront Park. The Overfalls Museum includes the light ship Overfalls, a ship store, a museum, the Monomoy Pavilion, and a museum support building, aka a shed with fenced-in area. In 2011, the Overfalls was designated as National Historic Landmark. It is the only such landmark in Sussex County, it is the only maritime-related landmark in the state of Delaware. Ships require considerable infrastructure support. Since the light ship Overfalls is not operational, the infrastructure is considerably less. However, as part of the ongoing restoration of the ship, the Overfalls Foundation needs to remove nonoriginal equipment from the ship to continue with her preservation and restoration in the museum. This is a customary practice for historical landmarks and requires facilities for storage. This includes the storage of woodshop materials, tools, equipment necessary for the preservation of the ship, workbenches, hand tools, permanent bench tools, and other equipment. Our existing museum support building is failing, and it needs to be replaced. Due to the ongoing maintenance requirements and increased public support of the Overfall Museum Complex, the existing museum support building is no longer adequate to meet our current and future needs of the Overfalls Foundation. The Overfalls Foundation therefore proposes to construct a new 12-by-40 museum support building, to replace the existing deteriorating building, which now has an active security system and other equipment for the operations of the Overfalls Complex. The improved size of the space will also allow for proper repair and maintenance of large pieces of historical artifacts in a covered and protected area. Artifact pieces which require extensive repairs cannot be completed in a single work session, but will be able to be secured and out of sight between work sessions. This type of space is customary for the continued restoration and support of a museum ship. The new facility will be exclusively for the purpose incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the lease facility as a museum complex, which includes the support of our tour operations, engineer, preservation and repair of the light ship Overfalls, and museum components, indoor storage of sensitive equipment needed for the preservation of the light ship Overfalls, housing and operation of an active security system, utilities and workshop support for the Monomoy lifeboat, and possible display of museum artifacts not suitable for display on the light ship. The structure is proposed to be placed, as you can see up on the screen here, between the existing Monomoy Pavilion and the basketball court and the playground. This was cited to minimize the obstruction of public views of the park and the Canalfront. It will not be used for human habitation, eating, sleeping, toilet facilities, or any other prohibited use. This proposed facility is permitted as an accessory use under the zoning code, and is permitted under the Overfalls lease as a museum complex. Under the zoning code, accessory use is permitted in all zones unless otherwise provided. An accessory use is one that satisfies the following criteria: it is incidental and subordinate to the principal use, it is customary to the principal use, it is operated and maintained under the same ownership and on the same lot as the principal use, it does not include structures or structural features inconsistent with the principal use. The proposed new museum support building satisfies all this criteria. Furthermore, it will not be used, again, as I stated, for human habitation, sleeping, eating, toilet facilities, or any other prohibited use or prohibited by zoning code. The proposed size of the museum support building does not exceed permissible dimensions for an accessory use structure. At 40 by 12, the structure's 480 square feet, it's less than 24 feet high. This is well within the 900-square-feet permissible and the 24-foot height that's permissible by current code. There are no setback requirements for the accessory use building in open space. The Overfalls lease with the city allows for docking of the light ship Overfalls and such accessory uses on the same lot, which customarily incidental to the housing and docking of the light ship, and availability for inspection and visitation of the general public. The plans for this new museum support building were presented to the Park and Recreation Committee on May 20th, which later voted unanimously to support the concept as reported by the Cape Gazette. That is our interpretation of the codes, and since you're the experts, that's why we're here, to see if we understand it the same way.
So it's, you're proposing a 12 by 40, what's the existing size of the building there now?
We have an 8 by 10 shed structure, and we have approximately, I think it's a 10 by 12 fenced-in area in the back.
Then this will be at the same location as those are, and just take it down?
Yes. Do you have the, yeah, we can work with this. Which one can everybody see? The, I can't do it for both sides, but-
Is there a page you're looking for?
I think if you can zoom in blue, because the left one is the, I think the existing, and the right one is the proposal.
So the shade, the hashed area in the left one is the existing shed, and then the fenced-in area shown behind it. The right one is showing the footprint of the new proposed building. And to the left, immediately to the left, is the basketball court. When this was drawn up, there were two transformers in the back. One has been removed, because apparently it was the old lights to the park or something that they just realized it was unused and took it out. The right, to the right of where the proposed building is, is the Monomoy Shed, and then the back area, the back margin there, shows where the playground is.
So the basic problem is with what we're calling this building, that if it's a shed, it's not a permitted use?
It's too expensive to be called a shed.
What if it's called the workshop?
Workshop is not a permitted use.
What's a permitted use then?
A museum.
A museum is a permitted use, and as this was originally brought forth, it was more of a museum exhibit area. And I believe the Assistant City Manager is here, who can provide additional information, because I've been brought in as this has moved forward, so I don't have all the beginnings, and that's how it originally started, it was going to be a museum exhibit area, and then it has morphed into, it's all storage and a workshop for support of the Overfalls. So it went from a museum exhibit, which is something that is a permitted use in the open space, to more of a storage building, and, which is not a permitted use.
Will there be any kind of public access at any time for a workshop, or to look at some-
It's going to be for the Dirty Hands Gang. Probably, half of it will be used for our equipment that we do our restorations with, the other half will be used for the, you know, storage of the, I guess that's a bad word to use, but just put things that we use for our open houses and tents, the easy-ups, and tables and chairs, and that type of stuff.
But there'd be never a case where you've got a piece of equipment in there you're working on that the public can-
I, not within my notion.
Change for something that makes it a little museum-like?
Well, one of the thoughts was, is because of its proximity to the Pavilion, and we've had a lot of occasion now where we're actually having activities, where we pull the Monomoy out, and we've had some youth groups meet in there for flag act- out, and we've had some youth groups meet in there for flag activities, coloring activities, and what have you. There's space between the two doors. Do we have the elevation of the building? Another one. There. So you see where we have the double doors that'll face the Montemoy Pavilion. That wall in between, we believe, could be a display area for some sort of, you know, educational or, you know, history-type, museum-type elements to be presented there, you know, plaques, what have you. And then there's personnel doors on either end.
So the, the pavilion, you couldn't combine the two?
We looked at that. Okay. Um, what I looked at with that, the pavilion was very nicely done. It's heavy timbered, it's a heavy me- metal roof. It has a very nice chamfer on it, has some very nice rafter tails. And by the time we get into cutting that, modifying it, to connect this building with that building, it just, the cost, I think, just got too prohibitive. When we, when I worked on the design for this, I took the lifesaving station as sort of my model, and tried to work with that to complement what it has proportion-wise and the board and bat and siding and all that, to try to make it blend in, that it should, but with everything that's there, it's going to be really be tucked in and concealed, I think, from the, uh...
What do you, what's the nomenclature for the existing building that's failing? How does, how is that allowed?
I can't answer that. I'm new to the area.
I also cannot answer that. That is, that has pre-existed for, that's been there for a while.
I, I, I've heard stories that it was someone's poolhouse of several blocks up, and when the foundation was started and the whole concept came up, it was moved down and to put things in. And then there was the fenced-in area. Yes.
Could I ask, first of all, let me just say I'm a huge supporter of the Overfalls.
Thank you.
I love what you folks do down there. It's, um, the, uh, what are the, have there been, um, ideas floated for an alternative to this, um, particular building going in there? What, what are the other alternatives, uh, in terms of, you know, providing a place for, uh, the equipment and, uh, that, that, that utilized down there?
To be quite honest, we looked at, we, we knew what our need was, was a larger space. We looked at where we could place it, okay, and anyplace else it becomes, I don't want to say eyesore, but it becomes a visual break to the nice scene of the park, the park skate. You know, we realized that we probably won't be able to come back for this again, so we pushed it to the 12-by-40. So we have some room to grow in this space. But to answer your question, back when the foundation was originally conceived and Canalfront Park was being, like, was in conceptual stages, they had talk of doing what is now the net house and having a maritime museum there, which I think was supposed to be like almost 2,000 square feet. That never came to fruition, but the net house did. And there were supposed to be bathrooms and all that within the museum, you know, for the museum space there. So we're, this, this was, what we felt was a reasonable alternative. It's nothing fancy on the inside. It's, meets the current flood standards. Um, that's why it's designed halfway with block. We are within an AE6 flood elevation, and that means it can flood to elevation six. The top of the concrete floor in this is set at elevation 5.5, just to get us down so we don't need steps or anything to get in and out of the building with the equipment and, you know. And where, where it goes in the future, this is what I know now. So, you know, like when they laid out the, the alleyways, they never would have conceived what is currently around here.
So we basically need an appropriate name for this facility that is not shed.
That's why we proposed museum support building, because it's going to be supporting our functions as a museum.
Yeah, I would think almost like a curatorial workshop or curatorial space. You know, museums often have curator spaces.
Could I just add, because I, I did go down and look at the space. I sat through the, um, the city council briefing on this, um, which was very informative. And then I, and then I went down to look at it. And, um, and how close to the basketball court and to the pavilion, it seems to me like it takes up most of that area between those two right now. It would go...
If we can go back to the site plan, please? Okay. If you look at the left picture where the shading is, where I pointed out the shed is, that left front corner, left, top-left corner of the shed up in there, is right on our lease line.
That's the existing shed there.
Of the existing shed.
Can you see that coming in on the right as you're coming in the mark, if I'm looking at an overview?
Yes.
Basketball court, it's right there.
It's right there.
Before your building.
Yes.
So, okay, so I was visualizing.
It's, it's...
So it's abiding the, um, the, the tennis courts kind of, or the basketball.
Basketball court.
Can you, can you basically extend that, that footprint with your building over top of that, correct, removing that and building this in as well?
Correct, but it's going to shift a little bit further away from the property, the lease line. It's going to be approximately 39 inches from the edge of the Montemoy Pavilion to where the s- the wall of the building will be.
49 inches. Wow.
Yeah, okay.
And it looks like it takes up a little less than half of the length of the pavilion.
It's similar footprint and size to the pavilion.
Simil- okay, wow.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot, it's good usable space for us.
Yeah.
So are you doing conservation or preservation in this, um, support building to help you with the museum definition?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so could you say museum conservation?
We could.
Would that, is that allowed?
Again, if it's, storage is not allowed.
But if, if the, if, if the work's going to be conservation?
It, it, from a zoning perspective, it's a tough stretch to make that work. This is why I didn't make a determination, um, because it's, it, it's very difficult to make a determination when the majority of this building is going to be used for storage.
It's going to have tools and workbenches and equipment in it also.
I mean, he said sensitive.
And it has our, it has our security system for the, for the ship and for the park area.
I also think you need to determine, is a structure that size appropriate in the open space zone?
Yes.
And in the park?
So that is...
Because I believe they stated at the, at council meeting that the building's going to be as tall as the pavilion that houses the boat. So I think that's something to take a look at and, um, and to consider. Because again, one, you've got the use of the building, and then is that something you want to see in the open space zone? And is that something that's appropriate for the open space zone?
See, here, here we are, um, yeah, we're just completed work. We'll talk about this later, and for the Open Space Committee, and we are, you know, actively trying to preserve open space. And when you look at it, it's, it's a nice green area down there right now where this, um, building would go. And it, it does seem to me that it would take up, it would really fill that space, um, to, you know, to, to a very large extent. The other question that I have is, and I'm sure materials would be handled safely, but are there going to be, um, I don't want to use the word hazardous, but, you know, materials that are, um, uh, you know, that are not tox- toxic is another word I'm trying to avoid, but, you know, cleaning materials that, um, that use for...
We're not looking at bringing in 55-gallon drums of stuff, you know. Can I say there won't be, you know, thing of lacquer thinner in there that we're using? You know, that is a possibility. I'm, I'm thinking a court, you know?
But you don't have that now.
Right, we have that in the shed.
You're not bringing anything else in.
Correct.
You're just consolidating more.
What we want to do is bring in tools, and we want to take tools off the ship so we can open up more display areas on the ship itself.
Okay.
We've been working hard. And now if we get into a project, like, we, we've recently started redoing the gaskets on the, the hatches. And when we get one, when we took the side doors off and we brought them, we had to take them off-site, you know, break out the rubber, put in new gaskets and all, then bring it back. And it wasn't a one-day job. And if we had the facility there, that would have gone into this space, and we could have worked on it. Tuesday mornings, we, there's a group of us that volunteer for three or four hours on Tuesday mornings to go around it, tidy things up, fix things, and I ended up with this project.
You're a short straw.
So, um...
Could I, could I ask?
That's, that is our existing support building.
The brown one?
Yes.
So I had a question, and it's materials, but it's a different sort of materials question. What I'm seeing here, and is this appropriate to ask, you know, I'm on A, I'm on H Park, so I'm, you know, it's hard to categorize it mentally, but I, but a, a question that I did have is that it looks like the proposal here is for a building that is made of AZAC. Is that correct?
Correct. It's, it's masonry, up five courses, and then it is framed with plywood, and then it has AZAC sheeting on it with AZAC strips, and the trim is AZAC. Then it'll all be painted. And again, it's just to make it relatively maintenance-free.
Yes, and I totally understand that, but also from, uh, historic perspective of the importance of it being a museum, um, this kind of flies, you know, this fits in. Um, and it doesn't sound like this, while I know that those are prohibited materials in the historic district, but this is not historic district.
This is not historic, and your function is, here tonight, is determine whether the use or not.
Whether the use is appropriate.
The use or not and the...
And someone else can worry about the materials. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to call it.
Yes.
Good, then I'm...
You're good.
Could I ask one, uh, can I ask one question related to that? I believe this is a relevant question. It is, um, the, I, I know, um, or I understand that we're going to have a new park down there, that there are plans to have a new park. How is that park?
Playground, a new playground.
Playground, playground, excuse me. Um, how is that, uh, it, how might this building impact, um, the, the new playground? Um, and is the footprint for the playground going to be any different or, and, and just sort of thoughts along those lines?
Hi, thank you. I'm Janet Reeves, the Assistant City Manager and also Park and Marina Manager, so, um, I can speak to the, the playground. Um, what we are doing is replacing the existing playground, um, that has, had considerable wear and tear. There are safety issues with it. It's not up to the standard of current playground, um, materials and whatnot. We're also looking at the accessibility of it. We are not changing the footprint of the playground. It's going to remain the same. Um, we will not have, you can see the, slightly on the right-hand side about midway, there's, um, the barrier that goes around and holds the safety mulch in there. We're having a poured, uh, safety surface, so it will be flushed to the ground. It will be slightly curved on the edges for accessibility. The proposed building will virtually enclose that entire open space there and will be closer to the playground area. Um, I don't know what the...
Closer than the back of the pavilion now, right?
Pardon?
No closer than the back of the pavilion.
Not, no closer than the, where the pavilion is now to the playground. Um, I don't know what the impact will be of drainage off of the roof. We have a drainage problem in that area with shearing off of the basketball court. Um, we are going to be working before the playground replacement goes in, we're going to be working on a plan for drainage in that area. But we don't know, you know, the, the question is what, what runoff will come off of the building. We just, we don't know that.
One of the things that, it just came to my attention, is what we're looking at where the backside of the shed is and where the fence is. The new building is closer to the pavilion than that. So that bit of green space between the basketball court and the shed is what will be, won't be impacted. The impact of the footprint, the larger footprint, is toward the pavilion and back.
But it doesn't exceed, what, doesn't exceed what the pavilion is, where the pavilion is now. Doesn't go past that?
No, no.
So that's the...
Can we go back to the, the, um, site plan, please? Right here. If you look, if you look to the, the right picture, there, the rectangle you see to the right is the pavilion. The rectangle to the left with the hash marks around it is the new one.
I, I understand. I just wanted to clarify that the, all the green space in front of the pavilion is not going to be affected by the plant.
No, nothing there. That, and that's was part of our selection process. When we got the idea for a new support building, we looked all around what our lease hold was and figured out where we could go and how it would minimize the impact. And that was really the only place that came to mind to me, or, you know, to the committee.
I do, I do have a concern that, but it's really more a use concern for the Overfalls, I would think, is that the location of that building, you know, that it's going to minimize airflow through the Montemoy Pavilion perhaps, for enjoyment.
I think that we have enough wind blockage because of the basketball courts and the trees that are there and the vegetation that's around it. I think that what we get is air that comes from the baseball field and what may come across the playground, because we really don't get anything from the, I guess, the west. I get very disoriented down there.
An observation. Just, I thi- I think you've got a very supportive, friendly crowd here. And we're on, we're on the side of this. I mean, you, you know, you want, but it looks like you want us to be creative here and, you, you know, sort of stretch the definitions of things, and you're a little bit locked in on your use. You really find that there's no additional museum directly, uh, guest of the museum use, maybe for your docents, or maybe for a ticket sales, or maybe for video stuff, or an observation, or an orientation, or any kind of thing that you could work into this that could help us.
We could, we could call it a volunteer, we could call, we could call it a volunteer center, because it's all volunteers that'll be working in there.
Well, we're not asking you to be, we're not asking you to be inaccurate with this, and nor are we want to be, you know, don't, I, I think it's a little unfair to ask us to look past what, you know, we're hearing about, you know, you're locking in on the use and it's not really a permitted use. That's where we're going to struggle. So we've got to go through some hoops to go around that. Um, perhaps there's some hoops you've got, you know, you may want to look at to go through that, too.
I don't understand what the problem is with an accessory structure, calling it an accessory structure.
Give me just a minute. I had that up.
So while she's looking for that, I'll just add, it would be helpful that the city does have some flexibility here. Um, this is city property and, um, you know, thinking long-term, since this is the planning commission after all, the lease goes through 2020, 2034. Um, and then what happens next with the structure? Is it a city property? Does the city change the use? Um, just some things you might want to think about.
So an accessory building and structures are defined as a building or structure customary incidental or subordinate to an accessory and accessory to the principal building or structure, and located on the same lot as the principal building and structure. I think this one gets a little gray, because the Overfalls is not a structure on a piece of land. It's in the canal, because it's the ship.
It's in the slip, which is the structure.
You know, I, I always, it cracks me up how...
You know, I, I always, it cracks me up how we always get tied up in the definitions and terms and without looking at the functions here, really, which is the most important part here, that's the function. What functions do we wanna provide for Overfell? What, what function does the building have? And it, it seems to me that this, this is an important function for what these guys are volunteering their time to do down at Overfell. So we should be accommodating and try to fit it into whatever definition we have in the code, not looking for an exception to push them out. Let's find a way to bring them in. Let's find a way to let this work.
Thank you.
These guys are working hard. We should work hard for them.
I agree. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're being asked to discuss and make a recommendation. I think we're all good with recommendation that this is an important function of the overfalls. It sounds like we're putting it back to the mayor that we're in support of it. Someone else has to really is burdened with, what do we call it?
And I think-
I would say that's right.
It, it is, it's gonna-
Figure out what they're gonna call it.
So I think what you can do is make a recommendation that the proposed use would be considered permissible and would be something that would be appropriate for the use of the overfalls within, as part of their lease agreement.
Somehow, somehow I think you should need to include the terms conservation or preservation or whatever.
We can call it, how about the Museum Conservation Building?
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, you're, you're not conserving the museum, you're conserving the Overfell ship, right? So-
Mm-hmm.
So again, I think if you wanna make a recommendation to mayor and council that their proposed use, that you have no issues with their proposed use, that that is your motion. You, you don't have to, if you just believe, you wanna recommend that the proposed use is fine, and that, that would be your motion.
So if we were to find that it's, it's an appropriate accessory use, that would be a recommendation we can make back to the city council.
Because we're gonna let it fall under the museum-
Conservation Building.
Under that, it's, you know, I think there's a lot of, um, also, I wish that, um, I wish that there was, Nancy Lehman was here because she definitely knows about curating, and, you know, that you're, you're staging perhaps exhibits there.
We can arrange that.
But you are, in a sense.
We are, and we've actually, we don't currently have it, but there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people on the Montemoy and on the-
Yes.
The light ship. And it's amazing to go back through the pictures and stuff of the guys that were down there mucking out that bilge when that ship was first taken over.
I know some of them.
Okay.
And, um-
And what we had talked about doing was seeing if there was a way we could have a looped video that we could play at this building, you know, and share that with the community that way. I mean-
So-
Then it's a museum.
So it would be, your motion, it was from what I'm hearing, is you want to make it, determine that it is an appropriate accessory use and strongly encourage them to provide more, um, exhibits and museum uses within the building.
That sounds good. That sounds good.
On the interior or exterior, because the placards are-
Doesn't matter, just-
The living exhibits there, yes.
So you wanna make that motion? Just say what I said.
What she said.
Yeah, just, all you have to do is say what I said.
Right, but I forgot what you just said.
No, you just, you would like to make a motion on what Janelle just said.
I would make a motion that we accept, um, this proposal as a permitted use. Recommend this, recommend this to mayor and city council as a permitted use.
You wanna recognize it as a per, as, as an accessory use and strongly encourage that the, the applicant provide more museum exhibits or curative items as part of the structure.
What Janelle said.
There you go. All you need to do.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, we are rapidly approaching our two-hour limit.
And you've got a few more items that you-
And we do, we have a few more items to go over. So do I have a motion to extend the meeting?
I would make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, second?
I second that. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, do, do we put a, do we put a time limit on that, though? I would like to.
Don't have to.
You don't have to.
I, I would like to, though.
Would you like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to do, like, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, an hour?
Let, let's, let's move this along. Let's say thirty minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Impossible. I think more an hour is a more realistic.
Janet is on board.
Janet's gonna be fast.
Janet should be maybe five minutes. I'm gonna put you on the clock, Janet.
All right, am I up?
You're up.
Do we have guests here? Do we have other presentations from other folks who wanna get, so we may wanna look at those priorities?
That, that's up to you. Janet should be a couple of minutes, and then the next one, I think, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I promise I will be brief. I am here, um, representing the Parks and Recreation Commission, of which I am the chair. And at our June meeting, I reviewed Chapter Forty with the commission, and Chapter Forty of Code basically outlines, um, what the Parks and Rec Commission is and what their duties are. Under Chapter Forty dash three, Item B, the commission will have, I'm sorry, Item A, the commission will engage in both short-range and long-range planning and report the plans to mayor and council no later than January first of the year. So the commission has been wonderful with their planning, short-range and long-range. Not so good at preparing that report and getting that formal document to, uh, mayor and council in a timely manner. So at last month's, uh, meeting, they established a subcommittee with four members of the commission, and through that discussion, um, it was recognized that there are other committees and commissions in the city that have impact on, on the Parks and Recreation Commission and what their duties are. So they identified that they would like a representation of LPC on their subcommittee as well as Bike, Ped, and Public Art. So I am here tonight to request, um, that the committee select, or somebody voluntold, to serve on that committee. Um, there, they'll be meeting probably twice a month. They have an aggressive schedule. We've already identified some long- and short-term goals. My charge to the commission is to have that report ready to present to the full commission in November so that it can then go to mayor and council at their December meeting, and then we're set for the, the coming year. So it's aggressive. Um, they've done some work already. Um, we just need to pull it all together. Thank you. Questions?
Is the, the LPC person the facilitator?
Uh, no, we, we have a chair and a secretary for the committee.
Do we, do we have any volunteers?
I will do it.
Excellent.
Thank you. I will have, um, the chair, who is Kay Carnahan, be in touch with you.
I have her name written down.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your service.
Do you need a second person also?
Not from this committee.
No, they're, um, from Bike, Ped, and Public Art, and we're good there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along then. The next item is, uh, discussion and possible recommendation to mayor and city council regarding the planning commission priorities.
So I just put this on your agenda. Um, it's been a, a while, um, but, um, and this is just to get you thinking. We have in the last couple of years done an annual priority list. So what you can do tonight is just, if you wanna do it again, just start sending me ideas and I can put a big list together. Um, and then we can start, um, you can rank them at your next meeting. So again, if there's ideas, and what I provided on the agenda was the stuff you had prioritized, the commission had prioritized a couple of years ago, and what you've actually been working on. So if there's other items, um, I would just suggest email me ideas, um, and I'll put a list together for next meeting.
Great. Okay, if everyone could, could, uh, put that on their list of things to do, that would be great. And you get a list to Jan, Janelle, and, um, we'll proceed from there. Okay, let's go on to the next.
If you, uh, if you need any inspiration for that list, uh, feel free to reference the comprehensive plans on the website.
Yes.
I would also just give ourselves some praise here, because a lot of the stuff on this list was done.
You guys have made a lot of progress, so, yes, congratulations.
Especially with the environmental committee, so there's a lot of good things on here. I, this is, this is an important, um, document for, um, for the Lewis Planning Commission to keep in front of us and, and to, um, especially with the, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, coming up and, um, and things like, like we, like what we just did with parks. You know, to, to, to really, um, uh, take a proactive view of what we want our city to evolve into and to look like in the future. And this list that we have and things that we're gonna add to it are the way to do that.
And again, they can be big, they can be little. I mean, if you think, it's like, oh, I just wanna change this one thing, we'll put it to the list and see what you guys come up with, and then we'll prioritize and send that to council, and they'll prioritize, and then, then everybody has their working orders, their marching orders.
Okay. All right, um, next item, discussion and possible recommendation to the mayor and city council regarding reconsideration of a condition of approval for S-122 Roosevelt Landing. I think we'll have a presentation first from the petitioner.
Okay, my name again is Fred Townsend. I'm with Hudson Jones, J. Work, and Fisher in what we call our Lewis office at Kings Highway and Coastal Highway. Uh, with me tonight, I have, uh, Mr. Lewis and Meredith Lewis, Cam Lewis and Meredith Lewis, who are, who are principals of the applicant. Uh, they're seated behind me. We also have, um, Eric Wall, who's familiar to you from Panone Associates, and Alan Decter, who is here as well from Panone, who can answer questions and speak to, to the exhibits particularly.
Can you move the mic up just a little bit?
That we've provided, okay. All right, great. So I know it's been a long night. I'd like to pare my, um, presentation down, um, for your benefit and everyone else's. Uh, I'd also like, um, to assume that you've seen the letter that I had written and have had an opportunity to review it, and I wanna thank you for your time and attention to that, particularly at this late date. Yes, thank you. Okay, so this is a request for relief from a condition, uh, actually, Condition Number Nine, that was, uh, effectively requires, uh, in retrospect now, a redesign of the application. And I'd like to explain why. And it, it, it's going to, it would require, if enforced, a, uh, a, essentially that we come back to you with a new plan, uh, and it would start the public hearing process over again and cause significant delay to the project, of course. As you know, in September of, uh, twenty-twenty-two, the LPC granted a preliminary consent, but imposed the condition that the impervious surface calculation be recalculated using sixty-five percent as a permitted maximum, rather than, or versus what was identified to provide additional stormwater and to provide additional stormwater management if needed. So it's a little bit awkward at the time for us to interpret, but, um, I think the fair interpretation is that, uh, you'd like us to presume that, uh, coverage there would be sixty-five percent and to engineer stormwater management, uh, given that presumption. But we're here to ask you to strike that, that condition for reasons that fit into three main categories. First, it's of, and I say this respectfully, but it is of, um, it's, it's legally unjust, it's a legally unjustified deviation from your code, and we'd like to talk about that a little bit more. Uh, your code recognizes that Sussex Conservation District, SCD, is the administrator of straight, of state regulations that govern sediment and stormwater. And as, um, I stated in my letter, and as I can repeat today, we have the SCD approval in hand. So I would argue that it meets your code requirement, um, this plan meets your code requirement as your code requires us to submit to SCD, and we have done so successfully. Uh, Mr. Decter can speak to that in greater detail. That the condition also imposes an unrealistically high presumption of impervious surface coverage. And, um, that the exhibits, uh, will show how we can't get to, um, sixty-five percent legally. And that for that reason, it's, it's a, it's an arbitrary, uh, figure that you're being, that we're being asked to adhere to. And then thirdly, the application of this condition requires us essentially to start over after two and a half years in this, um, in the queue. Uh, so there's been a lot of work done, um, given this plan that has brought us here today. And that work started, actually, of course, as you would recognize, prior to the submission of an application. You don't submit for an application for subdivision like you would ask for a building permit to put up a, a shed. There's a lot of work that goes into it on the front end. And that work started three and a half years ago with, uh, communications with SCD over what might be permissible on this site. So first, I'd like to acknowledge, though, that many of you, uh, understand, are new members, and certainly many of you were not members in twenty-twenty-two when we received our preliminary consent with this condition. So I understand this is a particularly challenging subject for, for those of you who are new and weren't present for that discussion. I wanna emphasize that this is not, this is not what I would consider to be typical, and I would hope those of you who have been on the, on this board, and maybe if you've been on a board of adjustment, would recognize that this is not an effort on the part of the applicant to avoid constructing an amenity that the planning commission would like to see. This is not an effort to redesign in a way that's less expensive necessarily. In fact, Mr. Decter, uh, can say, and I can, um, reiterate that if we were to redesign this project with a stormwater pond on the, uh, west side of Pilot Town Road, we would still have the same yield of eight lots. Um, we're, we're very confident that, that that would be possible. So we're really not here to try and save a buck. We're, we're here just to, just to maintain the integrity of the process. We're so deep into it at this point, after two and a half years, that we'd like to see it through. We have SCD approval, and we'd like, um, to move ahead, of course. Let's see. So I would say that it's not a typical kind of request to avoid costs, and it's also not a typical kind of condition. So if you're new, you might ask, well, is this something that is typically imposed on developers and that this developer wants to be special and not have to submit to a requirement that other developers submit to? And I, I, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with all the activities in, in Lewis, but I think it's fair to say that this is a very unusual condition, that it is not typically applied. And that were you to strike this condition from, uh, the, uh, list, um, that applies to this plan, you would not be breaking with tradition in, in any significant way. During, uh, the meeting in twenty-twenty-two, there was a significant amount of discussion about what the planning commission's authority is, what, what their, um, powers are with respect to these applications. And your council at the time, um, spoke at length about, uh, what those authorities are and pointed out that during the preliminary consent hearing, you have the authority to impose conditions, but those conditions must be reasonable. They must be reasonably designed to address specific health, safety, and welfare concerns. And I would submit respectfully that the concerns that we, that, that we have generally about the effect of impervious surfaces are, are not, don't justify any kind of higher standard that would be applied to this plan versus what- standard that would be applied to this plan versus what would be applied to another plan. What is, what this condition essentially does for Roosevelt Landing is that it applies an elevated standard and not, not a reasonable one for reasons that, that we think we can show. Remember, this is not a pristine site that we're starting with. This is an industrial, this wasn't until our purchase, was an industrial zone site. It had been used consistent with that zoning. It is largely covered with impervious surface now and that, that coverage is going to be reduced in this plan and there are going to be wastewater, or excuse me, stormwater facilities installed on this site that aren't there now. So I think it's fair to say there are going to be very significant improvements to the handling of stormwater that will be brought about by this development. Returning to the remarks of your then counsel, he spoke back in September of 2022 saying that if the application fails to comply with code requirements, you, the LPC, have the authority, have all the authority in the world to reject the plan. I mean, that's obvious. If we don't meet code, you can reject us. But then he goes on to say that if, if the plan complies with the code, then you must approve, but you can attach conditions that address specific health, safety and welfare concerns so long as they are reasonably calculated to address that concern or those concerns. And I would submit that this is not a reasonably calculated condition that we're being asked to meet and I would ask you to join me in that conclusion. So the, the, the language in the cases that were cited and used by your then counsel ironically referred to the term calculated in the context of conditions being reasonably calculated and justified by the facts in the record. And it is ironic that this particular condition also uses the term calculation several times. And if you're looking for a sign, I'm hoping that you could seize on that, that, that his words are very applicable to the argument that we're making tonight. So I would ask at this point if we could, I could either field some questions or if you'd like to hear from Mr. Decter first. He, he again can speak to how reasonable or unreasonable the 65% rule is with respect to this, this project. Yes?
I, I would just like to jump in with a few technical questions here as someone who's sat on the original.
Yes.
Number one, the questioning of calculations, calculations is what goes on in the planning office all day long, every day. They are calculating open space, they are calculating, so there's nothing untoward about that. I think there was an inference there that, that there was. So there is nothing untoward about the use of the word calculations.
I didn't, I'm sorry if it was taken that way. It was not meant to suggest that you were in an area that you were not, not proposed to be.
Or perhaps code was shaky because we had to calculate. No, it's what we do. It's standard practice. And I just wanted to clarify too, on the, your statement about, I understand that you say it's a legally unjustified deviation from code, which is an opinion, or that it's unrealistically high. However, the asking us to start over, what did you mean by that?
Well, it's my impression that we can't come to you with two plans. It's my impression that we can't say, this is the plan that SCD approved and that meets all the other conditions of your, of, of the process that we've been through to date. And then here's the alternative plan. This alternative plan is quite different, but it is, it was prepared in response to condition number nine, which says you, we have to presume that we, we've got 65% coverage on that site.
Right.
So that, that creates a significant redesign. Now, if your, if your staff and legal would come to the conclusion that, that you could act on one or the other in the same meeting, then, then perhaps we could move forward. But we don't, we're not going to have SCD approval and we're not going to have a lot of comments that we would expect to get from your engineers and we're not going to have all the agency approvals that we already have received with respect to this particular plan in hand in, you know, in a matter of 60, 30 days or 60 days. I mean, we're really ready to come forward with final now.
So procedurally, I think I just want to jump in as someone who was on the original decision. A recommendation was that, was this the last application that came in on the old subdivision plan?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a new subdivision plan now that is more stringent. And I also believe that, well, I, I know that we did not have anything that prohibited open space for our community being placed in the open space zoning, the OS zoning, which there were rare situations in the city of Lewis where that might come up and it came to our attention here on this application and we have since closed that option by amending our code. So if you were to apply, you would actually have to have your open space on the land side of the canal, over on the dairy site. So you would never want to have to start over again because it would greatly change the plan. But I wanted to make sure that everyone on the planning commission knew that that existed and include that in the public discussion because it's important. You kind of, I don't, you got a loophole, but it wasn't intentional. You, you just got lucky on something. We didn't close a loophole and you got your open space on the canal side. It's not, it's not something that anyone who was sitting on the planning commission at that time was comfortable with or approved of, but our code permitted it and we, so of course, we had to approve that.
Well, I, I commend you. I don't necessarily want to reopen that wound. I don't think we want to have a long discussion over that at this hour. That is a hurdle that we got over. I mean, I, I feel like future residents of this community are going to really appreciate the open space that they have.
They're going to love it. It's going to be wonderful, your, for, your community, but it kind of deletes the idea of, it, it isn't our intended use of open space in our new subdivision code. So what this plan comprises of would no longer be approved, what we're looking at. So that needs, the people who are new to the planning commission, I think need to understand that.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, so that does beg the question, is that in fact the case? Would we be treated with this alternate plan as having submitted a new plan under the new code? I don't know that we need the answer to that question right now, but if we did, then absolutely what you're saying is true, that we're, we're effectively.
If you had to come back and start over.
I think the, the question is, is does condition nine still make sense for this application or not? And that's the question before you.
I think at the time, the coverage permitted on these types of lots was 65%.
Correct.
And that's why we asked for, we didn't pull that number out of the air. It was in our code already, that that's the allowable coverage. And, and that includes driveways and patios and swimming pools and sidewalks. So it's not just the house footprint sitting on the lot, but it's a lot of other things that begin to add up as well. And I think that's why we were concerned about whether the stormwater management was adequate to accommodate that.
I, I certainly understand and that's obviously in this area and every municipality that's adjoining and as far as you can see, right and left, everyone has that concern and they're trying to address it as best they can. It's a totally legitimate concern that, that we still do have some legal issues that are presented by imposing a 65%. Albeit, I understand it's not arbitrary arbitrary. I know where the number came from, but it is not a number that is used to apply to the, to subdivision plans in the subdivision ordinance because the ordinance says you've got to submit to Sussex Conservation District. So.
But the 65%, as Melanie said, was the, when you applied for this, that was the requirement. And at that time, we were already working on the new code, so if you had wanted the 60%, certainly it could have been an option to delay the application, but, you know, other things would have changed too because we also require more open space now.
Right, I'm aware of that.
So I don't understand, and I'm sorry Eric, without even seeing your, I don't understand legally why this is arbitrary or a hardship.
Well, it's a hardship because we've gotten the SCD approval that your code requires us to get. It's just that this condition is being applied to us in a way that it's not applied to anyone else. It is not a condition of a subdivision approval that your plan be treated as if the impervious surfaces are maxed out at 65%. That's not what SCD does. SCD has a very rigorous, has a very rigorous administration of its regulations and does their calculations and, and their calculations.
Excuse me, so what, what specifically though, about the 65% makes it impossible for you to do it? I mean, what, what is it that you're saying that you can't accomplish and why does it make, why does this make development? You know, what is it really about the 65% that's the problem?
So I, I could make a mess of that answer probably, so instead, I'm going to ask Mr. Decter to take that one on. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Alan Decter with Panone Associates. I'm a professional engineer. I could jump right into that answer, but I'm just going to give like a minute background real quick. So I think, you know, in 2022, when we got preliminary approval for this project, this layout, I wasn't at the public hearing, Eric was, and maybe people thought, I don't see a pond, right? Stormwater facility, which is typical of most projects, right? Well, we, in 2021, we had extensive coordination with SCD and there are plenty of state regulations on how to do stormwater management without doing a stormwater facility. In this case, the existing site was roughly 60,000 square feet of impervious surfaces between the building and the stone and pavement, all draining out to the road, just straight out to the road and then down the road and then as, at some part Pilot Town Road turned into a super elevated road where it crossed and worked its way to the canal, right? So in coordination with SCD and Delott and everyone, that was not a safe, current safe avenue, right? So what we did is, as part of certain regulations, we showed that with standard stormwater practice that's applied on every project in this county, right? For residential lots, these are on average quarter acre lots, that we showed a more than 15% reduction in impervious surfaces from existing to proposed, which meets quality compliance. The other part of stormwater management is quantity, right? Now, in the code, and I can give the specific regulation code sections, but the, by discharging directly into tidal waters, that meets quantity, right? That you don't have to worry about matching pre-development rates because tidal waters is, is subject to basically overflow. And in this case, what we did is we proposed a pipe under Pilot Town Road. We captured everything on this property into this pipe and directly to the canal, which then removed all that runoff from the road, improving safety and drainage for everyone, right? So I just want to give that quick background. Now, the reason why 65% is unrealistic, right? So on the first exhibit, if you, if they pave every square inch of the buildable area on these lots, you don't get to 65% on any of them. Some are closer in the 40% range. And that's if you paved every square inch, including a 20-foot wide driveway, including a 20-foot wide driveway, right? So in reality, I mean, on the one lot in the back left corner, which is lot six, I mean, you're looking at 8,000 square feet of impervious surfaces. No one's coming in here and building a 6,000 square foot home and 2,000 square foot pool. Like you said, it's, I'm covering all the bases, house, driveways, pools, patios, everything. You can't even get to 65%, right? And in reality, no one is building to every square inch. So that's why we applied through SCD approval process, which is standard practice, is 38% for proposed quarter acre lots, right? So with the 38%, we show, we meet all the compliance, we got SCD approval, we have all our other agency approvals for this project and, and all the area around, if you want to go to, sorry, the third exhibit, it's kind of the opposite shading. So all that green area is the area outside of the building restriction lines on the sides and the rear, but that's all easements. That's all for drainage easements or utility easements. So none of that area can ever be used because I know in the code, there are certain sections where, you know, you can go five feet over the setback line or something like that. In this case, you can't. You physically can't. They're easements, they're all protected area for drainage and utility improve, infrastructure. So that's back to, you know, where these lots, you just can't get to 65%. So we're getting, we're, we're being asked to have a condition that's unrealistic. It's not even achievable in real life and I'm, you know, we're trying to ask to get something more appropriate, more standard on any type of subdivision in the county. And, and that's really where we're coming from. And these exhibits we put together kind of show the different data that we're trying to show you.
Can I ask a quick question? What percentage can you, what do you think is realistic from the, the SCD?
For, like what we got approval for?
Yes.
That's 38%.
Oh, 38.
38, that's standard for quarter acre lots, that's standard practice. So in any subdivision that you do in this county that you deal with SCD, you apply 38%. There's standard, you know, quarter acre lots, eighth acre lots, one acre lots, two acre lots, they all have a predefined value that is assigned. It's used for everyone. Your, your town engineer can comment to that if, if, you know, if you don't believe me, but that's, that's how it's, that's how it's.
We believe you.
Standard practice, but yes, I mean, that's, that's how it was applied. That's how SCD reviewed and approved the, the plans.
I, I must admit that I'm getting confused and I'm seeing some other faces that look confused. So if we, which we put a condition of 65% maximum coverage, you don't have to, it's sounding like there's a belief that you have to have 65% coverage. Is that?
That's how we're taking the condition.
What I'm hearing? Because that kind of, am I taking that the right way? Because I saw other faces looking perplexed around this table.
Okay, so, so that is not the way that I read it.
Okay.
The way I read the condition is.
Maximal.
That, that forget about SCD and their calculations. We want you to presume that your, that all of your lots are going to be covered at 65%, which is the maximum. Then we want you to design your stormwater management with that presumption.
Okay.
And we can't get, and we can't get to 65. Now, we can get to a higher number than 38 without having to do a redesign.
For your stormwater management, is what you're saying.
And that was my question. What number? Okay. So I know 38, but so you designed yours to 38. What number can you achieve?
I need you to mic it now.
Or are you, are you going to achieve realistically, is my question.
Well, the, the maximum number we can increase from 38% would be 42% to meet the, to stay within the current design and parameters that we got SCD approval for.
Thank you.
May I ask a point of clarification from the stormwater management? When I looked at your plan, it doesn't look like there's a pipe discharging to the canal. It looks like it goes under the road, across the street and then is overland flow to the canal. Am I reading this wrong?
Yeah, it's, it's that detail right there. There, there's certain buffers that are adjacent to the canal that we can't encroach or disturb. So we're, we're discharging right before those and then sheet flowing and channelizing that into the canal.
Blue, can you go to the other, get to the other side, please? I need, yeah, that one. And zoom in a little bit if you may, please?
I mean, there should be, Eric, right? 50-foot setback from the canal, from the, because there's the edge of the canal, there's, you know, there's, there's.
That's the blow up detail.
No, no, no. The blow up was on the bottom right of the sheet.
Yes, but that's the area in the blow up detail, the end of the blue line.
Yes, yes, yes.
So the blue line is the underground.
That's the underground pipe going under the road, discharging there and then flowing straight to the canal. And we show on the proposed grading plan, the grades that will ensure that runoff to be directed to the canal and not spread out on all that open space area.
So does the pipe come back up and then discharge into that, to the riprap area and then go into the canal?
No, that, the end of the blue is the end of the pipe that's daylighting from underground, which would discharge into the riprap to reduce the velocity and then flow into the canal.
Thank you.
All by positive grade.
Another point of clarification.
Another point of clarification. Did you say that, that you're doing quantity management but not quality management?
No, uh, we're meeting quality and quantity compliance. And that the way we're doing it, which is not the typical with a pond, is the quality is being met by the reduction in pervious surfaces from, compared from existing to proposed. Um, and the quantity is being handled by direct discharge into tidal waters.
Kind of a clarification from Alex. So, Alex, the way you read Condition Nine, is that sixty-five percent maximum? Or is it a ma, to the maximum of sixty-five percent?
The way I read it is it's to the maximum of sixty-five percent, the same way Mr. Townsend reads it.
Is that the way you read it, Deb?
Yes. Yes.
But, but you have approval to build to thirty-eight percent?
Yes.
So, it's a little bit of overdesigned?
The sixty-five percent?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's
Significant overdesigned?
Significant overkill. That's not achievable.
But what's to stop people after their initial little houses are built from adding on like they do in the rest of Lewis and covering as mu, much of the lots as they can? I'm, I'm concerned about stormwater. If it's not going into the canal correctly, it can go all over the place and then it becomes a BPW problem.
You, I mean, you guys discussed earlier tonight in the meeting with Janelle's office, reviewing all permitting and lot coverages for every lot, so that's, I mean, that's, you add that mechanism in place to make sure that no one's adding anything to any lot.
But we can't prevent people from adding on to get to that sixty or sixty-five percent lot coverage. And so, the stormwater system should be designed and constructed to meet that kind of pervious coverage.
And may I ask a follow-up question about the, because we're talking about the SCD approval? So, you have your SCD approval in hand, but is that, that's not a final inspection, obviously, cause it's not constructed. So, it's a preliminary approval?
No, it's final approval, SCD, Del Dot Fire Marshal, they've all been given to the city of Lewis,
Okay.
which is required to get final approval from the city.
Okay.
Just so you know, it, once it gets approved and they start construction, there are inspections by all the agencies to verify that they are in compliance. And before the developer leaves, they have to provide verification that they, they are in compliance with the approved plans.
So, we gave, um, the recommendation to approve to Mayor and Council who approved.
No.
Uh, no. Well, no, 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 not on that, on, for the development in itself. And my question is
This has not gone to Mayor and Council. It won't. This is under the old subdivision regulations?
Right.
So, it's still with you guys.
Back then, in twenty-twenty-two.
This has not at all gone to Mayor and Council. And it will not until they come back in, get final approval by a planning commission, which means they need to meet all the conditions of approval. And once you say it meets final, then it goes to Mayor and Council for a public hearing with all of their final approved agency approvals. So, it's, that's why we, that's why we changed the, the process. Um, cause Mayor and Council won't see this until the very end.
And just to add on to your question about how, how, how can you stop them from going to sixty-five percent? Just, just to make sure everyone's aware of the numbers on the one exhibit. I mean, the, if, if you did build, you pave every square inch of the buildable area with impervious surfaces and a twenty-foot wide driveway. If I, this is a little blurry, but bear with me. Lot one would, the max, these are the max, Lot one, fifty-six percent. Lot two, fifty-six percent. Lot three, forty-eight percent. Lot four, fifty-four. Lot five, fifty-two. Lot six, sixty-three. Lot seven, fifty-four. Lot eight, fifty-one. Again, blurry, it might be off, but that, that, that's what I'm telling you. I mean, you can't even get to sixty-five percent. So, we're getting, we're getting requested
Why when elsewhere in the city?
Be Yeah, be, what?
Physically, it's not possible?
Physically, it's not possible for that, for that data right there.
Well, also, I would like to point out, is that, and I don't know if this is relevant, but when we gave preliminary approval, we also approved, um, a, a lengthening of this, of a five-hundred-foot waiver was granted, correct? Is that, was it a five-hundred-foot to extend the roadway, which does shape these lots? So, perhaps if they were in a different configuration, you know, with a road on one side and lots coming off of it, perhaps it would be different, Barbara, but that's, you know, this is the shape that we
And I'm not taking sides. I'm just pointing out, if you go to the one that has the green on it, thank you, they can't build in that green area.
Right.
So, that also limits their ability to get a higher lot coverage, cause they can't build in the green area. It's an easement for, for drainage.
This also shows
But I'm not taking sides. I'm just pointing that out.
And, and on top of that, the, the front yard setback isn't highlighted green, which is thirty feet, right?
Yes.
Thirty feet, so that can't be really touched other than a driveway and the whole open space in the back. So, the, the green part is probably only half, maybe a fraction of what actually will stay green on this property, where the other exhibit is showing that the maximum buildout that's possible in the building restriction line, which can't achieve those numbers.
The green highlighted on the plan on this exhibit demonstrates where the stormwater flow is, where the drainage swales are.
Easements. They're, that's all easement area.
In, in response to your one question about how the stormwater might flow out everywhere, this is designed so that the swales take the water and direct them to inlets or to the street with, has inlets, and then into the overall pipe system. So, that's what this exhibit is showing, is those swales and drainage systems.
Eric, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, my name's Eric Wall. I'm with Penoni Associates.
Can I ask one question? The ordinance that was recently amended to require pervious surfaces on, on certain, under certain conditions, how would that impact, you know, the question about, you know, if someone were to add buildings and, and try to, you know, how would our new requirements on pervious versus impervious impact that?
Everything here would have to comply with that. So, there, I know we're talking about sixty-five. They're gonna actually have to comply with sixty percent lot coverage. They're gonna have to plant trees on the property. If they wanna do a stone or paper driveway, they can do that. So, all of that now comes into play with when they come to get a building permit.
Okay.
So, again, I think your, your determination is
I, I am just honestly confused on, on this.
The question is whether or not you want to accept the approval from the Sussex Conservation District, or if you want, which would be to the eliminate this condition, or do you want them to, do you want to impose this condition based on what they said they would more or less have to start all over again? Well, based on my understanding, it'd be a significant approval that I'm not gonna approve administratively. It's gonna come to you and you guys are probably gonna require a new public hearing, which is more or less a new application. Which means it would have to comply with all new regulations in the subdivision code.
So, I have, I'm trying to get my understanding around this. So, what we're saying, or what you're showing us, is that those swales will support stormwater management for thirty-eight percent lot coverage. But some of the lots could have coverage ultimately, cause architects are very creative and people are big on patios and things like that. They could have up to sixty percent coverage over time. So, those swales may not be adequate to manage the stormwater, particularly since we're getting heavier rainfalls, you know, hundred-year storms are happening every few years now. And I think that that probably is what the, um, commission was concerned about when they put that, that condition in there.
So, so the, the swales themselves and the pipes are just like, there's, there's two parts with stormwater management. Hy, hydrology and hydraulics. So, the swales and the pipes, and I'm not, I apologize if I'm getting too technical, please, please stop me, but the hydraulics is, the swales and the pipes are just a conveyance method. They're just conveying, they're capturing the stormwater, the runoff, and conveying it to where it needs to go. The hydrology is, which, which is what SCD approved, is the, the methodology used for how you manage the overall change of the property, right, from pre to post. And how you're saying, you know, ag, again, we, these
Explain to them what pre to post means. I don't think they
So, existing conditions are, the, the, I mean, it's still there, right? It hasn't been demolished. The, the building and all the, the pavement out there, that's, that's existing conditions, what it's been for the last fifty years, right? So, this is gonna show a reduction in impervious surfaces, right? And reduce the runoff and then convey it in a safe manner to the canal verse, all over Pilot Town Road. So, that's how we're improving. We're not negatively impacting anything by not achieving this sixty-five percent. But again, the, these homeowners, if, if one of these homeowners did wanna pave every square inch of their property, they can't even get to sixty-five percent. That's what we're, I mean, that's, that's the first thing we have to notice.
Okay, so, I, I'm trying not to be confused, but I think we are still confused. So, I just wanna go through the implication. Our current city code, current, which I understand was not when you were developing or in the plan for lot coverage for residential, is sixty percent. And we have defined permeable and impermeable. And we have given allowances for residents to put up more trees, to use shells, stones. We've given a lot of flexibility. My question is, you've gotten approval for your stormwater for not, for a thirty-eight percent. When that first home comes to the city and that first home goes to our planning office for a permit, and they wanna put in a pool and they wanna put in a macadam driveway, and the next one wants to do that, and the next one. And what is our city going to do? Is our city planner only gonna be able to say, I'm sorry, the stormwater for this development can only handle thirty-eight percent? Or is our city planner gonna approve lot by lot? And then what consequence do we have for those residents of Lewis who are following our code to sixty percent, because that's the code they would have to follow, for their, um, lot coverage? Are they gonna be at risk of a stormwater system that will fail?
So, you could change the condition to thirty-eight percent and that would cover
I'm asking that question. What was the consequence of the new resident of Lewis? We care about safety, as you do as well. We care about safety. We care about public health. We care about being a coastal community. So, when you've gotten the stormwater management, which you fully understand is through the Sussex group, what's the implication for residents who are building out above thirty-eight percent? What's gonna happen to them and the stormwater management?
So, realistically, they, they, they can't get to sixty percent. I mean, you're assuming, I mean, if you look at every lot in the city of Lewis
How do they get over the thirty? My question is, it's not that they can't get to sixty percent. They can have smaller homes. They have a million choices. My question is, what happens in the delta between thirty-eight percent that you have approval for and a homeowner that wants to go into any of the calculations you provided, forty-two, fifty-five? What happens? That's the, that's the question. What's the stormwater management? Are we gonna find that, you guys are all gone and probably were all gone by then, but the fact is, they have a stormwater system failing and the city is gonna have to, and BPW are gonna have to have some responsibility to address that?
So, so the thirty-eight percent is the calculation that's used? The thirty-eight percent is the calculation that's used, but I don't think it's fair to say that once you get over thirty-eight percent, that you have a failing system. I don't think that's the case at all. In fact, we could, we could take that condition and comply with it if you reduce the number to forty-two percent. We can comply with it. But I don't think you should assume that when you get to forty-six percent, that this system is failed. It's, it's, it does, it's not, I don't think it works that way. I mean, Alan?
We can do this. I mean, if you're worried about the infrastructure, the piping and the swales, right? We could, so traditionally, um, pipe systems are designed for the ten-year storm. That's it. Not the twenty-five, not the hundred-year storm. And I forget if the city of Lewis is maybe twenty-five-year storm. But we, we design, you know, per the regulations, we design it per that requirement. Now, we could increase, it, I mean, the, the storm events, ten-year or twenty-five-year storm event is precipitation and intensity. Now, we can increase the infrastructure, the swales and the piping to handle sixty-five percent, if you want that. So, there's no possibility of failure of that infrastructure ever in the future, because that, those numbers would never get there. But again, those pipe, those systems aren't handled for the hundred-year storm. So, if a hundred-year storm happens, those, those systems will be inundated, but that's standard practice. You, you know, infrastructure's not designed for the hundred-year storm. But we can make, we can make changes to
Yes, so we can go to, I mean, as Commissioner Anna said, we're living on a coastal community where the hundred-year storm is, is a reality. So
And will ever do.
And, right, and so, what I would say is, for council, I would advise the commissioners, protect the people that will be living in this development, figure out how to do that. And that might be, as you're saying, maybe a different infrastructure approach. It's not a replan. That's actually bringing in the science and the engineering of what we're experiencing as a community and protecting these future residents.
So, maybe it would be to revoke Condition Number Nine and replace it with a new Condition Number Nine that says the infrastructure needs to meet the twenty-five or the thirty-year storm event. If I've got the numbers wrong, please let me know. The hundred-year, I think, would be a bit much, because nothing really handles a hundred-year. But I think if you want to make some progress, instead of there, right now, per the state code, they're addressing the ten-year storm. But if you want the infrastructure to address a twenty-five or whatever increment Alan can provide, maybe that's the way you go.
Could, could, thank you. I think this is a productive, um, avenue to explore here. Could you just elaborate just a, a, a little more on what changes over what you're currently required by SCD, you know, with the ten-year storm standard that you're building to? And if you did go to something more than that, let's say thirty-year? If, if, what, what, what changes would that entail? And what kind of protections for the future would that guarantee?
So, so if we increase the, um, proposed storm intensity for the infrastructure, swales and pipes, because that's the, the, the main component of the stormwater management for this property, it doesn't affect SCD in any way, right? SCD would stand as is, because they're not looking at that specific item. That's more under the city's purview. The city engineer is reviewing the capacity of the swales and the pipes. So, if we increase that to one of those higher storm events, that's fine. It would, that, we would just have to make sure that the swales and pipes had capacity for that storm event.
Could I ask the city engineer to comment on this, please?
Yeah, so, we can look at that. Um, one of the other ideas I was having, please, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan. You said if you could also design the swales for the conveyance of the maximum sixty percent? Under the same, the normal storm conditions?
Yeah, so, so right now, the, the, you have to, um, there's area, an area breakdown that goes into, like, yeah, this, I don't wanna get too complicated, but in, in these calculations, you use an area that, that times against the rainfall and the intensity that produces the runoff, right? So, right now, that area breakdown as part of that calculation is only the thirty-eight percent. So, we can increase that part of it to sixty-five percent, right? Meeting, and, and then apply that meeting the standard code compliance of the ten or twenty-five-year capacity for the swales and pipes.
So, what part specifically about Condition Nine can't you meet?
I mean, it, it basically says to model, model the project at sixty-five percent, which is unachievable.
But you could create the, the infrastructure for sixty-five percent, right?
Yes, because
That's not a problem.
Yeah, because SCD is looking at land cover, overall land cover.
So, we repeal nine and just say, we want them to put the infrastructure in for sixty-five percent, which represents the overflow for that type of, right? Pervious circuit. That would, that would be really, I think, the intent, I, I wasn't here, of course, what the original intent was, is to make sure that there's proper drainage and water discharge at high levels, right?
I, I think so. And, and my sense is, and I, I am not an engineer, do not play one on TV, is that that would, uh, address the, the issue, the very good issue that I think that Councilwoman Marasco raised about Marasco raised about the future, about, you know, what happens when, you know, as, as, I think you're absolutely right, people are very creative at, at building onto their homes and there is less, or, or there's more lot coverage.
It would simply be overbuilding, to use your words, the, the, the water system, the water flow systems, right? In, in the event that there's a major storm and those future homeowners who had already built that pool and that big driveway, whatever it is, have the ability to drain it off the problem, right? You could do that, right?
Yeah. I mean, if we design the land cover at sixty-five percent impermeable, that would be draining to all of that swell and piping infrastructure and then that would meet the storm event required by the city, then it would be overdesigned because at the end of the day, they, the land cover would never achieve that amount. So it would be overdesigned and protective of the future.
You know, I would say an easy solution here is that we just cut back on the percentage, percentage. However, we can't go below sixty. That's the current standard. If we did that, then that would be arbitrary. So it's kind of hard to just, okay, carte blanche, remove the condition. But, you know, we, we do now understand and hear what you're saying, I believe.
Why, why don't we just take the sixty-five percent out of the equation completely? Can we just do that and just, just say we want to...
Design to the twenty-five or thirty-year storm?
Design to the twenty-five-year storm or design to such a degree that, you know, the, the drainage system will handle sixty-five percent, whatever you want to say, the infrastructure...
At this point, I'd go with sixty, but Alex told me you have to have a public hearing to amend the condition of approval.
So, I'm thinking through this right now, if I may.
Yes.
Just trying to protect the integrity of the process. Back in September twenty-twenty-two, when this was initially placed as a condition, there was a public hearing. And just thinking through this right now, there, there's a requirement that if there's a condition, it needs to be based on the evidence within the public record. And the public records long closed. There's many new faces here. It might be the most sound thing to do, to hear from the public before you make any decision to modify the condition. Or another option is you can clarify the intent of the condition if you think that they're satisfying it.
Or we could just keep the condition. That would be the other option, correct?
You could, yeah.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question, though. The entire site, I'm talking about different permeable and impermeable, the entire site is what you've got the thirty-eight percent design for? All of the, the entire...
Correct.
All of that site, including the restricted areas, everything that's shut down can't possibly be built on and the set aside. And then we have the lot coverage, which, you know, that's what you're talking about with respect to these lot coverage because you've got considerable amount of swell space and other things that's not typical with a lot of developments if they have a pond or otherwise, I guess. I just want to make sure that difference is, these, you're not designing sites, building sites that are at thirty-eight percent. It's the entire footprint of the, all of the land that's at thirty-eight or possibly forty-two percent. And it's designed to drain all of that is what you've built now.
Yes.
It's not, because these are contiguous properties associated with one. They're not one individual property and then another person coming along five years later and building another house without, without swales and without drainage and without everything else.
No, yeah, usually, I mean, for this small nature of this property with eight lots, all the, all the development infrastructure would be built day one, right? The road, the swales, the pipes, everything. And then the, the buildable lots, you know, the home builder or how it sold off, you know, those lots could happen one after another or if it's something this size, it's not going to be like someone coming in and build all eight homes on day one.
Can, can I just say, especially given the fact that we've already gone over our half hour by almost another half hour, is, is, having read your, your very impressive, thoroughly researched letter, and, and my sense of fairness, because I had just come on board when this, and when this was being considered, and it, I don't think that we want to, I'm speaking for me here, want to go back and make you redo something that you did at a time when, before we had adopted a new code. I think you were playing by the rules then. You went through SPC. And, and I think that you, you ought to, that out of fairness, that we ought to do everything that we can to allow you to move forward with that. Having said that, I think if there is an elegant way to do this, that you would, that, using the approach that we were just talking about, where you, you build the infrastructure to the point where it can handle a twenty-five or thirty-year storm event and that you, that, and that that will handle the, the concern that we have about the future, that, and we can do that without having you jump through all the, the legal hoops and having another hearing. That would, to, to me, and again, I'm just speaking for me, would be the best solution here. That way, we get out of this, we're protecting the future of Lewis, we're protecting the residents, we're protecting our interests on behalf of our community and, and it's not making the, the owners here jump through unnecessary hoops. But I don't know, and I would ask our city planner and our council whether or not there is a way to achieve that.
Yes. So if you want to clarify that either that the infrastructure handling the twenty-five or the thirty-year storm meets the intent of condition nine, or the infrastructure that can hold the capacity at, the conveyance at sixty percent meets the intent of the condition, then you can make that motion that that's your understanding of one of those options, if you're comfortable with one of those options.
I think we can make that motion, meaning that we, I'm, I'm comfortable with making that motion, saying that to the conveyance, I think conveyance is probably, deferring to the engineer, I think the conveyance is probably the one we want to go with, right?
Yeah. The conveyance is, is moving the stormwater from one spot to another safely, you know, going, pull the SCD designs, but, and, and requirements of what your storm, but with the sixty-five percent or sixty percent.
And also, to be clear, that every home here is going to have to come through and, through your office. And actually, they will be under present code, they'll be under sixty percent, right?
And they're going to have to plant trees. And so, yeah, they, they got a couple of different things. So if you want to, if you're comfortable with the conveyance, just state that, that you, there's clear, that you, you clarify that the condition, that sixty percent, the infrastructure can't, dealing with the conveyance at sixty percent meets the intent of condition number nine.
I have a question. That would not require a pub, another public hearing.
Correct, because it's a clarification that they're meeting the intent per Alex.
We would just modify condition nine.
You're just clarifying the intent of condition number nine.
I suggest that if you're clarifying, you should leave it at sixty-five percent because that would look more like it was a clarification.
Yeah. To my understanding, there's no change in the language of the condition at all. It stays as is. You're just clarifying that the design, the, the clarification to us from you is that we need to apply that sixty-five percent for the conveyance of the stormwater infrastructure, meaning swales and pipes, to meet that requirement.
And that, and that your city staff will make that determination at the, at the building permit stage and during inspections and verifications and, and what?
City engineer.
City engineer is going to verify that as, for final plan approval and then, so it'll be addressed at, for part of the record plan.
Yeah.
That's assumed here, right?
We'll get the, if, if this is approved, we'll get a note on the record plan.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion that we, when we repeat that, the, that we clarify that, that condition nine is met with the conveyance of sixty percent, sixty-five percent, fifty-five percent.
The infrastructure handles sixty-five percent of the conveyance.
Infrastructure handles sixty-five percent.
If I got that right.
Yeah. But I would suggest that we just, you know, have that, have that reflected from you guys making the written response to us as what you understand you're going to do for our review and approval, rather than us, you know...
No, they're going to...
You're setting the criteria for them to say, this is what we understood you to say. Does this now satisfy what? You know, we might, that way, have lawyers and talk to each other.
So I think, I think what you're saying, just to have it in writing, I mean, now, are you, would you issue something from tonight saying, you know, the, the clarification is this, or do you want us to write it to you and you say, yes, you're good?
Yes.
That's fine.
All right. That's my motion. Do you want a second?
I, I second that, though.
Okay. Take a vote.
So do we have something to vote on? Could you all go around and state your reasons?
Yeah. So the motion was that, that the clarification, that condition number nine stays, but the clarification is that the infrastructure will provide conveyance at sixty-five percent. And then, yes, that's it. And then you have a...
Sixty, sixty-five percent land cover.
Land cover.
We have a motion in a second.
Second.
Alex, you say, I guess I have to go first because I made the motion. So I'll, I made this motion, I, I, I agree with this motion because it clearly meets the intent, the original intent of the planning commission, though, of course, we weren't, new members weren't there. You, reading the language of the condition, I believe this makes, reads, makes, meets the intent of condition nine and preserves this area from future floods and, and proper, proper drainage.
I agree with your recommendation.
I believe this protects the long-term interest of our community and, and also does not place an undue burden on, on the applicant who was acting in good faith at the time that they put the application forward. So that's why I am voting in favor of this.
I vote yes. LPC's role is to make recommendations to mayor and city council, and I think this motion achieves that with the intent of condition number nine. So I vote yes.
I vote yes because this has been an extended application and I understand that and there has just been because of other issues on site. And we don't want to create a hardship in that timeframe. I do think that this points out a disconnect between the Sussex Conservation District and the city of Lewis interest, which is an ongoing problem. So I grant it in hopes that we can come up with a solution for just this one application.
I'm voting yes, not being a part of the original application and not understanding it at first, but now I do that what we've proposed here meets the intent of section nine.
Yes. And, and I also vote in favor of, of the motion. I think it, for all the reasons that have been previously stated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I didn't understand...
If I could add, if I, if I could add, this is something of a frustrating process and yet, going through it, you come up with a solution that we hadn't even anticipated. So it was very beneficial to, to meet with you and get your input. And for that, I, I, I offer my thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. In consideration of the hour, do we want to proceed with committee reports or do we want to adjourn?
You still need to take public comment?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's right.
What's the flavor of the board?
My, my sense is that because, you know, we have done, I think, the open, speaking for open space, which I participated in, and, and of course, you're our chair, and, and we have Councilwoman Marasco, who's been an active participant in that. I think we want to give a thorough briefing on what went on there, and I don't feel up to it tonight, to be frank. So I think if we could postpone that to a later time, I'd feel better about that.
Okay. Anyone care to make a public comment at this time?
I do.
Yes. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sarah Prito and I am a new resident of Lewis at 405 Savannah Road. I just found out that I'm going to actually be on your agenda next month, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'm trying to open up a home dog rooming business and I was referred to you by the mayor and the city council about my home business application. They are concerned because I am in one of the multi-unit historical structures and they said, they stated that the LPC is very good at determining the commercial building uses and that we live in a limited commercial historic structure. I just want to let you know that we have some opposition with our neighbors. They don't live here full-time, they're not full-time residents and that they have their concerns with, I guess, with noise ordinances and things about that it could hinder parking and things like that. I, with a dog rooming business, I am going to be doing a one-on-one approach and it's only by appointment only, so there's not going to be a huge traffic influx around, also when it comes to parking around the corner from 405 Savannah, there is a, already a fifteen-minute public parking usage so that we can actually use that, so we won't actually be deterring any of our neighbors about parking and instances like that. When it comes to noise, obviously, I'm not going to be dog rooming at six in the morning or at ten o'clock at night. I will be adhering to all your noise, noise compliance and stuff like that. Let's see. Also, my home business will be a complement to the neighborhood and as the council, council members elder and Richard said, that we need to, you know, this is a town's organic growth from a fishing village to a modern town. I believe a home dog rooming business will be an added asset to Lewis. I know several people have dogs in our neighborhoods that are wondering when I'm going to be opening and such things like that. And, you know, I would like to, you know, be part of this modern town from a fishing village type of thing. So just wanted to let you know for next month. That's what's happening.
Very good.
Oh, so sorry. I just wanted to actually change the zoning ordinance to have the home dog rooming business be approved on our home business as opposed to, because it's not on the approved list, but it's also not on the disapproved list. So that's what we're trying to do.
It's a modern problem.
Yes.
So I'll see you next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone else care to make a comment? Okay. Anyone online?
No.
No? Okay. Very good. In that case.
Mayor, there's some just brief comments that the mayor and city council wants to share, as executive may share.
Okay. Great.
Please.
The first one related to the applicant, as she appropriately said, we denied her application because it is not allowed in code. However, mayor and city council did ask that the planning commission would look at the home business code. It's time to look at it again. We're not making any judgment from mayor and city council. We're just asking that periodically, you have to look at code and this is one that we felt, what is allowed in home business, either what's allowed. And if it's not allowed, if it's, if it's permitted, that's something. If it's not permitted or if it's silent, and Alex, I think you were clarifying, if it's silent, it means not permitted. So we need you to do that and the mayor and city council, of course, we'd like you to expedite anything that we ask you to do, but if we do that, that's, that would be very helpful. The second item is, I chair the finance committee for the city and we will be looking at long-term budget planning and we'll ask all commissions to feed into that process. So we'll do more on that right after Labor Day, but if you could put that on your agenda, we fully know that you've got comp plan process coming so that you might have some budget requests that are outside of your norm. We're putting together a whole tier plan, so we need to hear from each commission and committee. Third item that relates to the environmental subcommittee, I'm very well aware of the activities that subcommittee obviously, and one of the things that that subcommittee took on from the predecessor study of the C level rise was how do we inform residents about all codes publicist? And so the initiative is called a welcome package that the environmental subcommittee is appropriately working on. However, there has been concern and confusion from other committees, thinking the environmental subcommittee is writing or influencing other committees jurisdiction. So A Park is... So A Park is concerned that if we're listing in the welcome package, A, near an historic district, that the park subcommittee was stepping into their scope, their term. We know that's not true, we clarified it, but what we highly recommend is perhaps the environmental subcommittee should make a presentation or just reach out to the other subcommittees, so we don't have another subcommittee thinking that. That was never the intent of the environmental subcommittee, it was just a welcome package that would be online or maybe delivered, okay? So we know there was no malintent, but the confusion is real. And the last item is, and I know that I've talked to the city planner about this, when Mayor and City Council are addressing an issue that's come through the planning commission, be it an ordinance, be it a development, what we get as a package are blueprints and what your votes are. Yes, you accept it or you didn't. We don't get the flavor of the conversation. What that's requiring us to do, and I'm not saying I'm not willing and my colleagues are not willing to do it, we have to go back in and we have to listen to all of your deliberations. So what we would like is when you have a new ordinance or you have a, a recommendation or conditions on development, could you add more of that to the package that Janelle provided, like the rationale for your vote? And could you ensure that the public hearing, should we need to call on you, there's someone from the planning commission that can clarify, not adding new information, clarify what was in the public meeting? So we have this gap, and it's, and that will really help us to listen to what you have thought through because you are the experts at zoning. And so that would make our job, I don't think our decision-making is easier, but it would make us more informed of what the work you all have done, whether we're in alignment or not, that's, that's to be determined. But the fact is, we could hear the conversation either way.
Well, actually, the decisions and the, and the rationales are recorded in the minutes.
Yes, but they're not in the package that we received.
I can work on that, but if you still want, I can work on that, make sure, sometimes we have the minutes, sometimes we don't, depending on when it gets to mayor and council. So I know Jackie does her best, and we greatly appreciate her for doing that. But we, we sometimes don't have the minutes or we have draft minutes, but I can work on making sure those are in the packet as well.
Just an easy idea, too, that I had shared with Amy, is that keeping track of where we are time-wise, because it's a lot easier to go back and say, well, I need to watch from minute fifty-four to minute, you know, ninety-seven for that discussion than it is to have to watch the entire, the entire meeting that will be a few hours long. So that's something I think that could be helpful for LPC, I mean, for Mayor and City Council.
You know, and Amy, I like to, I'm glad you brought this, the idea of somebody from the planning commission sitting in on these public meetings. Because I, I'm struck by sometimes the disconnect, not just because of when council starts talking about something that's gone through the planning commission, and they're sort of starting over again in some ways, you know? It seems like they're starting over, or they don't, they haven't, you know, they, they don't understand what our three-hour conversation was about. And they're sort of, you know, they're taking their, our three, starting over again, which is like, we should have somebody who's a liaison and say, hey, you know, we talked about that, that's how.
Just to give a briefing.
Just give a briefing.
That will really help. And I think also, because I have the opportunity to sit here, but this is true for all commissions, is that when we are making, when we're in our judge role, the more we can understand the good, hard work of the volunteer teams, the more we have potential to not start over again. That's the intent of Mayor and City Council, or not just with you all, but with anybody, that any commission that is coming and wanting us to rule on something.
Good idea.
Adjournment?
Okay, any other comments?
I just need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Check it.
Second, sorry, is there a second?
Nine forty-five.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.